All right, call meeting to order, start with the pledge, Mary Ann.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a long agenda and a lot of audience tonight, so we're going to try to move things as quickly as we can so that we're not all here at 10 o'clock tonight. Start with some minutes. No, no Ted.
I move that we accept the August 22nd non-public session, meeting minutes.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You've got one of your members on Zoom.
Oh, is Ted on Zoom?
So we need to make sure, we need to know where he is and who he's with.
Oh, Ted. I see that you've checked in with us on Zoom. We, there's a couple of protocol things we have to do. We need to know where you are, what your reason is for not being able to make it this evening, and anyone else who's in the room with you.
I am in my house, I'm by myself, and I'm quarantining.
Okay, that sounds completely reasonable, thank you. More minutes?
I make a motion we accept the regular meeting minutes from August 22nd.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I make a motion we accept the meeting minutes from the Hedges Room at PSU Campus on August 23rd.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I was in present.
One abstention, thank you Neil. Any opposed? And, oh right, the select board will meet on the following dates, Friday, September 19th, for a non-public work session at 4:00 PM. That's this Friday?
Yeah.
And then in two weeks, September 26th, on a Monday for our regular meeting. And then again, on October 11th, which is actually a Tuesday. And then Monday, October 24th, back on the Monday schedule.
Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, can we just revise, the September 19th meeting is actually a Monday?
Oh, it's a Monday. That's a week from today.
Right.
Okay. So Monday, September 19th, so a week from today at 4:00 PM for a non-public work session. And the Plymouth Recycling Center is having a household hazardous waste collection day on Saturday, September 24th, from 9:00 AM to noon. During that time, we're going to only be accepting hazardous waste from folks, so if you would normally be disposing of other waste, please wait until afternoon, which is good for everybody, because otherwise you'll be in a very long line waiting to process through all of that, so. But get your hazardous waste dealt with on September 24th, from 9:00 to noon. Town offices will be closed on Monday, October 10th, for Columbus Day. Again, all meetings will be held upstairs here in Town Hall and will also be simulcast on Zoom. And any, the Zoom information can be found on the town's website at plymouth-nh.org. Any citizens wishing to be listed on the select board's agenda should notify Town Hall before noon the Friday before the scheduled meeting. We are going to have a couple of public hearings tonight, but I'm going to skip over those to get to some agenda items. The first one will happen at 5:15. So, jumping into new purchase orders and grants is Lisa.
She's got on.
Lisa just jumped on. Lisa, do you want to talk to us about Ulta Play Rockwall?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And Robert could probably talk more about that, I tried to sign the PO just to get it activated.
Lisa, hold on just a minute, you can't vote on this until after the public hearing.
Oh, is this part of the, this relates, this is coming from the funds from the 5:30 public hearing? All right, we're going to put you on pause for just a moment, thanks Lisa. But we can go to Joe and talk about commercial driving school.
Joe.
Alex Gradzeal?
Yep. So when they hired him, they didn't have that option, and then they changed the rules, so it looks like we're going to follow through so he can get his CDL.
This is so that he can drive all of your trucks and plow this winter and all those important things?
He's already done the written part, so he's just going to do the school part of it right now.
Anybody else who doesn't have the CDL?
He's the only one.
That's great, any questions for Joe?
I've got five minutes, so do you have to take a class, or can he just go ahead and do the driving test?
No, he has to go to a class.
Okay.
Changes the whole rules.
All right.
Mandatory for everybody.
And do we cover the doctor's appointments, the annual physicals too?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'm done.
That's for all my guys regardless.
Do you have to renew them annually, Joe, or the CDL, the license, do they have to renew them every so often?
Yeah, I mean, when you renew your regular license, you just renew it. But if you don't renew it and you forget, then you've got to start all over from scratch. Then that's on you.
Are there any other commercial driving schools in the state?
Well, the one he's going to is Rayton Concord, so that's the closest. They're all set with that.
So you want a motion? I move that we expend $5,450 for commercial driving school for Alexander Gradzeal.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds good.
And then I have Bellamore Catch Basin Services. A contract with him.
Is Bellamore the company we used last year?
Yep. Yeah, he hasn't raised his prices in like three years, and he always treats us good. And the other guys are, they're competitive, but they have a different, they do it differently, like, we do it by the basin. And so the other guys will come in and just do like an overhaul, and so we can go around and we can mark all our basins. So we do up to 500 basins, we have over 1,000. So we try to do half of them, and most of the time we're under anyways, so.
Yeah. This says it's for 250?
Uh, yeah.
So we're going to try to do a quarter of them?
Uh, yeah, because last year we, we, last year I don't think we did 300, so. And we already went around and marked them, so this is about what we need.
Yeah.
Do you have some that fill up faster than others?
Yeah, depends on, like on Highland Street, on the hills where you put all the sand, the runoff.
Where do they dump the sand that they pump out?
In a pile at the pit.
The pit?
And we just recycle.
Leave it in the sun?
Use it for fill.
Yeah. It's all road sand, right?
Yep.
I move that we expend $11,250 for a contract with Bellamore Catch Basin Services.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Your last one.
This last one. Front stairs at the Town Hall, we've got a price to pave it. I tried to get, you know, like three people, I get one person to respond, and the others, they haven't, they're just so busy. So I have one person who's, that we've used, and he does good work, so. He had a timeframe coming right up, and I didn't want to miss that window. So that's for $6,720.
Is this the last thing we need to do before the front steps can be opened?
That's it.
Great, and it looks like they, you're scheduling them next week, early next week, yeah.
You're going to have a ribbon cutting?
You ought to for that price.
Maybe we should. Much work as we've done.
Yeah. Looks good, though.
It does look, it looks very good, it'll be nice to get this finished work done.
Is there a new sign out front too, did I notice that?
Yeah, broke, that one broke.
When did that go up?
That was rotten.
There's a new, you mean advertising signs for all the postings, that's new.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to draw.
That's good, and you didn't say it, but it's on the purchase order that we're utilizing ARPA funds to pay for this work?
Yes. Yep, ARPA funds for that one.
Currently have $463,000 left.
Good, and I always ask this every time we talk about the ARPA funds, what's our timeline on spending that?
And I always say either the end of '25 or '26.
We have a couple of years.
Twenty times, yep.
We'll use it.
Oh, no doubt.
No, we'll use it.
So.
I move that we expend $6,720 to GSM paving to complete the work out for Town Hall.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, sounds good. Thanks, Joe. Good work pulling all that paperwork together, it was very easy to follow. What do we have for time? Three minutes. What do you think, chief, can you get in under three?
You can do it, though.
We can put you on pause if we have to, and we'll come back, but let's get it started anyway.
So the purchase order in front of you is for a 2022 Ram pickup truck for parking enforcement. So currently, right now, our parking enforcement vehicle is a 2015 Ford utility vehicle, which is a used police vehicle. We haven't had a new parking vehicle for many years. Currently, right now, our signposts, any meters that get pulled up, we just have no means of transport. Went to go and get the vehicle inspected, it needs a bunch of work, it needs over $3,200 worth of work. It's a 2015 with 112,000 miles on it, don't know if we really want to spend that much money. So right now, we don't have a pickup truck. The fire department gifted us a trailer for the police department too, so we can put in road cones. We have bike fence for crowd control, which we don't have any means to transport. So we do have a trailer, just don't have a means to transport the trailer. So what we would like to do is trade in the parking vehicle as well as one additional police vehicle, which is a 2015 Ford utility that has 130,000 miles on it and needs a bunch of work. So I couldn't get the trade-in values yet, but this company that we buy all of our Cruisers from, they're willing to do a trade-in value, but I just don't have those numbers yet. And the reason for this quick purchase order is usually you can't get vehicles. But I called her and she had an agency cancel this order, and the truck is already being built, and it already has a towing package installed, so we can tow a trailer. And for a fleet vehicle, for the price of $34,649 is decent. Everyone else that's placed their orders have had them canceled, and a lot of agencies are going to just regular dealers and buying vehicles that are off the lot, which is more expensive. And as you can see, I, we printed out a couple more, they're into the $40,000 if you go and try to purchase one of these off the lot. So a fleet vehicle, we've used Central Chrysler Dodge out of Needham, Mass. For the last several vehicles that we purchased for the police department, and they've always beat anyone else's quotes. They deliver the vehicle for free, and any warranty work we can get done in Tilton. Trading in two vehicles will reduce our fleet by one vehicle, which will save us in maintenance and in fuel costs as well. So this purchase order is the most amount, but we're waiting for our trade-in values. So this would be the, up to $34,000, and hoping with the trade-in values it would bring the cost down. And we would use, right now, I think there's $84,000 in our parking fund money, and we're looking to use the money out of that fund.
Good intro, I'm going to pause you, and we'll do our hearing, and then we'll come back, we'll ask you some questions about it.
You've got it, no problem.
Perfect. So I'm going to open our first public hearing, it's 5:15 PM. I have a thing to read here. The select board's holding a public hearing in accordance with RSA 31:95B for the acceptance of unanticipated funds from the State of New Hampshire Department in accordance with SB 401, in the amount of $127,728.21 for the purpose of maintenance, construction, and reconstruction of Class IV and V roadways. Any comments from the board on this?
Not yet.
Any comments from either of you?
So just so that the board is aware that this is a special appropriation, and it is to be used for block grant money only for roads, and it's coming from Senate Bill 401. So we appreciate them, including us in this.
Should I read the letter from the Department of Transportation? This is in relation to this, right, yeah? So we got this letter from the Department of Transportation with the subject line of Plymouth Special One-Time Highway Payment in accordance with Senate Bill 401, Payment for Maintenance, Construction, and Reconstruction of Class IV and V Highways. Dear Mr. Terrell, the following is notification of a one-time highway payment being made available to your town in state fiscal year 2023, based on the passage of Senate Bill 401 effective in July 2022. Senate Bill 401 directs the department to divide and distribute a $30 million one-time payment between all New Hampshire municipalities based on the distribution methods of block grant aid apportionment A. This one-time payment is separate from your regularly, regular quarterly payments. This one-time payment is anticipated to be available to the town of Plymouth during the month of August as follows. August 2022 actual payment, $127,728.21, and we have received those funds as indicated. In generalized terms and in accordance with statutory provisions for distribution of block grant aid apportionment A funds, this one-time highway payment is based on the municipality's mileage of Class IV and Class V highways as well as the municipality's population, and then there's some contact information if we had any questions.
We don't need to have it in our budget to spend this money, do we?
That's what this public hearing allows you to do, Neil.
Okay.
Allows us to take this money in and then, and then we can decide where on the various roads we're going to apply this.
And you have a handout from Joe that just came in, I think it's on the blue folder, Zach, maybe? There, you just took it off.
This one.
I believe that that's Joe's thoughts on how to use these funds.
So Joe, this is a letter from Joe in regards to RSA 3195B, use of funds for highway department. And his suggestion is that we use this on New Hebron Road, starting at Texas Hill Road to the bridge of, on New Hebron Road, and on Highland Street as an alternate for funding, and would be used to overlay sections of Highland, sections with deep rutting. We're, we're a little early in terms of another agenda item we have this evening around the capital improvement plan. But how, how did these projects align with some of that early improvement plan schedule that you've been working on with that committee, Joe?
Well, these are separate, these are separate from that, they, you know, that's only a certain amount of money, and these two projects won't even cover all of this, so.
Right, but were these two projects already prioritized on that list?
These are separate.
Wasn't New Hebron already budgeted though?
Three years out, two or three years.
Three years now? Oh, okay.
Is there, is there any reason we wouldn't take the next priority item off of that plan as opposed to the, like, what makes it, what makes these?
Whatever you like, but these are, these are some priorities. I was asked to put together something.
Always interested in your opinion on, you know, the priority, you're closer to that.
All the running, all the water runs down the road instead of in the basins, and you can't do a decent job plowing it. And then on New Hebron, it's not even the worst part, it's a section that is just starting to fall apart, and we don't overlay it, then the whole.
Oh, end up having to do the whole thing, yeah. Yeah, so you, in both these cases, you're trying to get ahead of much bigger problems.
Yeah, it's preventive maintenance.
That makes sense, that's why it wouldn't be on the big project list, because it's not.
Right.
Yep. Thank you. Unless there's other board questions, I was going to open it up.
Yeah.
Anything? Anybody from the public want to speak in terms of the acceptance of this money or where we intend to use it? Yeah, please approach the mic and identify yourself if you could.
Yes, Jeff, I'm 28 Langdon Street, I'm just curious, in the budget, is Langdon Street, Pleasant Street area, or any of those blocks on this plan?
So all the streets to some extent are on the plan, right, but what's being suggested for this money are these roads? Phil, do you happen to have the CIP list right in front of you?
I do.
I was shuffling through my papers earlier.
Langdon Street and, sorry, what are the others?
Pleasant's definitely on.
Muggway, the Cross Streets. Russell. Russell Street is pretty much where all the Russell are.
Okay, so this list is not official. We have not accepted the recommendations from the capital improvement plan yet, but this year, we've been doing a broad capital improvement planning process. And prioritize on that list includes completing Bartlett Road, which has been an ongoing project, and then Highland Street, sort of as the first two. And then Pleasant is on the list, and I'll just, I'm gonna read them in order. You can roughly take that as the suggested priority order. But so Pleasant, Russell, New Hebron, Emerson, Main Street, Thurlow Street, Carmel Drive, Smith Bridge Road, and then it sort of becomes other and pushes off the six-year kind of window that they were looking at.
So it's not even on there, basically, Langdon?
Yeah, so Langdon is not, is not on this prioritized list.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have some more discussion later about CIP planning. Yeah, you wanna speak to that as well? And we are, again, we are a little bit premature in talking about the CIP plan because it's not officially an accepted plan, but there was a lot of work that went into that to do some prioritization.
Sure. It sounds like Joe's plan is to do overlays with this money, and the construction that's in the CIP is actually proposed reconstruction of roads, which is gonna be more cost-intensive. So I would think this is a perfect, appropriate use for this, you know, it's a lesser amount. You know, I think when we look at New Hebron Road, I think we've got $425,000 in for reconstruction, whereas this is, you know, a much lesser amount, which should be able to cover top coating or shimming or whatever, however we wanna address it. But it seems to be appropriate, and it doesn't seem to conflict with what we've looked at for the CIP.
And we are trying to do a balanced approach in road maintenance where we are trying to get in front of roads that have issues so that they don't become $400,000 projects. We can extend their life without always having to repair something that's completely deteriorated.
My understanding is that there's a road surface management report that really focuses on maintenance of surfaces, which is different than the construction that we have in the CIP plan, so...
That's right. Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, please. Just hit the microphone so that we can, we get that, and identify yourself, please. Thank you.
When you say roads, does that include the sidewalks that's on the plans?
So sidewalks are separate but related, yeah. And in the estimated reconstruction projects, a lot of those include sidewalks in their price. And I didn't catch your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy Ringly.
Thank you. Anything else from the public? All right, I will close the hearing. It is 5:25. We only need one hearing on this? Or do we need two?
No, we only need one.
Okay. It might entertain a motion?
I move that we accept unanticipated funds totaling $127,728.21 for the projects that were identified by Joe, the use of the projects, and New Hebron Road and Highland Street. That's rather lengthy, but...
Second. Any discussion? Ted, I keep forgetting about you. Any discussion from your end?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. As always, we get through these things, and then we're slightly stuck.
Give Alex the two minutes, or...
Well, the question I was gonna ask you, Alex, was, and now I have this paperwork from Anne, which is lovely, was where you had planned the replacement of that vehicle in those CIP conversations?
Yeah, definitely isn't one, so...
So is that...
It's not in the CIP.
So that parking vehicle wasn't even on the list?
Nope, it's not on the list. So we would be trading in the parking vehicle and a police vehicle. They're both 2015s. They need a lot of maintenance. They need a lot of work. So that would reduce our maintenance and also reduce our fuel costs because we're lowering our fleet by one vehicle as well. So, and it would be good for parking enforcement and the police, so it's a dual purpose. Any equipment that we need, we can repurpose some equipment, the radio. We can do that in-house. We don't have to send it out, so...
So we would be down one cruiser that you're gonna trade in?
It's okay. We'll make good.
So this is to replace Scott's vehicle?
Yeah, the parking...
Scott's whole vehicle?
Yes.
And the benefit is it's a pickup truck?
It's a pickup truck. You can actually put the signpost in. So we have a pallet of signposts and boxes of signs that need to go out. And right now, we can't put signposts in, so you can't put them in those vehicles.
And you said it was like one of the more expensive ones, but it's actually cheaper than the...
No, 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 no. This is definitely cheaper than anything that you would have to go and buy off something off the lot. No, it's a fleet vehicle, so fleet vehicles are like, you know, vinyl, and that's what we need. We don't need anything fancy.
Are you, oh, excuse me, are you buying it from Foss or from Rainham, Mass?
It's from Central Chrysler Dodge in Rainham, Mass. That's where we...
Do we pay a sales tax on that?
I don't think we do.
They deliver it?
They do deliver it for free. Yep. They drop it off at the PD. And like I said, any warranty work, we can get done right in Tilton. That's how we've been doing it for our Dodge police cruisers as well.
So when we knew the trade-in value?
So I emailed her this morning, and she had sent it off to the people that do the trade-in values. The only thing is, is this was a cancellation, and she was willing to hold it for tonight's meeting. I'm sure by tomorrow, she could sell it, no problem, so... Like I said, the purchase order is for up to $34,649 with the, then the trade-in value of the two of the vehicles.
Do you have any gut feeling on the ballpark of those? Are we talking...
You know, they're 2015s that need work to even pass inspection. And then, you know, the rust value, I don't know how they, I don't know.
Is that something you normally would shop around for, trade-ins?
So trade-ins? I don't know.
I know you do with cars.
A lot of times, what we do is we give them to the highway department or other departments, but these two vehicles, I don't think it would be cost-effective to put money into these two vehicles. So I think the trade-in value would be better than it would trying to give someone else these vehicles to put money into it. I mean, they're 130,000, 112,000 police miles that we drive around in circles, and they're roads. They're not highway miles. So, and like I said, it would be dual-purpose for parking and police, so...
And due to the increase in their parking revenue is one of the reasons why they have this additional funds. It is not gonna tuck, will not affect the tax rate at all. They're taking it out of that fund specifically. And there still will be about 30,000 left.
Eighty-four thousand?
So it's at 84,000, yeah, and then...
And we're taking some this year to offset the taxes.
Okay.
So there'll be between 20 and 30,000 left, and...
And our parking revenue is up.
Yes.
It's that. Yeah.
The goal would be for that parking revenue eventually to actually pay for the enforcement officer, right? Which it historically has not.
So our new parking enforcement officer will start October 1st.
Oh, good. Great.
Yeah, we're excited.
We are over time, so I have to send you back to the audience again. Apologize for that. The fun of these pre-advertised, pre-timed public hearings, but I'm gonna open up public hearing number two. The Plymouth Board of Selectmen are holding a public hearing in accordance with RSA 31:95B for the Acceptance of Unanticipated Funds Received to Date in Remembrance of Luke Besson. The amount of donations available with interest is $10,239.33. That proposal would be to create a place of remembrance for Luke within the town's park and rec departments. And I don't know...
Just to comment on that, when I posted the public hearing, that was the amount that was in there at that time. I do have a new list here, but it says 10,249. So there's a little bit of money in there.
Another donation.
Yes, and we've had other donations that have come in as well, so just keep that in mind. It is growing. And Lisa is here to speak to the board about that.
Yeah, Lisa, do you wanna speak briefly on the, on these funds?
Sure. So we, as you know, Zach, we were asked by the Besson family to add the remembrance of Luke in his obituary back when this tragic event happened in the first place. It was tough. And so they wanted to hopefully do something at Fox Pond Park, which was a place that Luke retreated to often as a young boy and enjoyed the park in many ways. So that was the initial plan to maybe do something at the park with the funds, not expecting that they would exceed $10,000. So we were, we met, Robert and the Bsons and I met, and we talked about some ideas. And the thing that kept jumping out at us was how active he was. So that's where the rock wall PO and came through, and you guys looked at that a little bit earlier. And we, the four of us thought that that would be a great idea. And of course, we have extra money in there, so Robert can speak towards some thoughts he had with that, with the difference that went on. And we wanna also thank the high school for, they did a fundraiser with shirts, and that's, that really elevated that amount quite a bit. And so I just wanted to publicly thank the high school and a lot of the students that put that fundraiser together in remembrance of Luke.
Thanks, Lisa. Robert, did you wanna speak at all to this as well?
So the rock wall...
Microphone, please. Thank you.
So he was, you know, he was very into fitness and everything, so they thought a rock wall, some sort of climbing apparatus would be good. This fits well into what we have over there, because it's not very big. So we already have quite a bit of stuff in the park.
So this would be like an expansion of the...
It's, it will be.
We'll talk more about the PO itself, but yeah.
It's separate, but it will be, you know, it'll just be part of the playground. So yes, it will be, but not, it's not attached. It's its own piece. And then as far as anything further, there is, we're working on a bench with the high school. And I worked there also. So we're putting together, since he was very active in the weight room, so we've collected some weights and some other lifting apparatus stuff. And we're gonna chip it off and have a bench built to be placed at Fox Park out of weights with, you know, which was his thing, like that was... He was, I would, I come into work at 5:30, and he'd be already there. And he'd lift, and then go home, and then come back, and that was every day, even including when he was sick. So it was a big part of his life. So we kinda thought about that idea, and I spoke with his mom, who's now coaching cross-country at the high school, and she's very interested. So we'll use that, some of that extra stuff. I don't know for sure. We haven't got all the weights together yet, but that's kind of a plan that we have in the works. But the wall was something that they were, they liked, and we decided it would go well. And like I said, it doesn't take up a ton of room. And it'd be good for the kids and be good for the park.
Thank you. Any other public comments in relation to the acceptance of these funds? Anything else from the board? Close the public hearing at 5:36 PM.
Ted texting in a motion?
I could use a motion.
I move that, oh, go ahead.
I make a motion. We use the amount of $6,509.
We have to accept the funds first.
Oh, sorry. I make a motion. We accept the funds.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's 10,249?
Yep.
Thirty-three?
Yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I wanna take us straight into the invoice on the rock wall, though. So we heard a little bit of discussion about that. So we have an invoice in front of us for Ulta Play for a total of $6,509, which is well less than the amount we just accepted. And it's, the amount is under our requirement for competitive bids. Although, that being said, it looks like we have a competitive bid here, which is significantly higher, which is good. So we're looking at a lesser bid. Looks like roughly this is gonna take up a almost 20-foot by 17-foot area. The rock wall itself is kind of an L-shaped structure. It's, itself is seven foot six by four foot 10, and the height on that is 60 inches tall, so five feet.
I, are you gonna move a motion?
Yeah, unless there's any other discussion, but yeah, yeah, I'll take a motion.
I move that we accept the bid from Ulta Play for $6,509 for their solution to a rock wall.
Second.
Any discussion? How quickly will we be able to get this in and installed?
I don't know for sure. They say due to some supply chain issues. We don't really have a timetable. We will be installing it depending on weather, which I'm sure we'll have to use concrete. We'll have to see from there.
Robert said that we, supply chain issues, it could take a little while to get it, but we'll be installing it ourselves after they deliver it. Weather could affect the concrete, but we'll get it in as soon as we can.
And Zach, they're on standby for shipping it out, so to add that to it. So we'll save with Robert installation and his guys, as well as the insurance. It meets the specification of keeping the same insurance. I checked into that when we even started this whole process. So insurance-wise, it meets what we already have in place.
Yeah, that's good. I figured it must, because it's not, it's not any higher than the, than any of the equipment that's there. It's actually lower than some of it, so, yeah. And the actual site work and that kind of thing, we will be able to do all that ourselves. There's, okay, great. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's great. Great way to honor Luke. All right, this time, we're gonna fully complete your item. So I think we got most of the information we need. My only concern is, and it, you know, the price seems good. You've done your research. We'll get some trade-ins. We're reducing fleet. All of those things are positives. I'm a little surprised it wasn't in the planning, right? We did this, this process this year, and for it not to even be on the list is so surprising to me.
This is usually what we do, is we try to, you know, use vehicles, but now that we've been thinking about it and about what the needs of the police and what the parking enforcement's needs are, that's why we started the research now. It's a little late, but came up with a good opportunity. I mean, you go back to look at other departments, looking for vehicles. You know, the ordered vehicles got canceled. They had to go buy vehicles off of the lots. Much higher price for used vehicles mileage. This is a brand-new vehicle. It's a fleet vehicle. The price is much less. We have an opportunity to trade in two vehicles, so I just thought it was good timing, so...
And the other cruiser that we're replacing is also not on the capital plan either?
It's not, no.
It's really not considered part of your fleet right now, is it?
Yeah, it's offline. It's just, these two cars are gonna, you know, take too much money for its, you know, it's not worth it to put money into them. It's not.
And this is inspection month?
Exactly.
Where our vehicles...
That's where we ran into them.
Yeah. Admittedly, the difference between $3,200 to keep your current vehicle alive versus $32,000 for a new vehicle is significant.
It is, but we have the opportunity with the funds that we have available and with the increased funds for parking enforcement. I think it's, I mean, we're not due for new cars for probably two, probably three more years, so even in the possibility of trading... another car down, which are probably going to be sedans, that's clearly not going to work for parking enforcement, so.
And you can only use that parked money for parking-related, right? I mean-
Yeah. And so that's what the, the truck is for, is for parking. So we can, you know-
But we could use that money to offset staff costs in the parking park.
Yes, for the parking, parking-related budget.
But there is money left over that they will use to do things like that.
Which, yes.
So we're going to grab some to offset taxes? If we're going to buy a truck, we're going to-
And still have funds left over.
Yeah.
Yep.
And when you go to set your, your budget this year, potentially you could take more than the $30,000 we took out for this, the budget that we're in for tax rate. You could take additional money out. So as Zach said, you're trying to get to that total. It's potentially, you could get there at some point.
As we look at the next fiscal year, and we're doing planning there, yeah.
Are there any other parking-related on the CIP that were-
No.
Okay.
I don't think so. There might have been some stuff that we put in the CIP for meter replacements, because we did do that for bonds. And I think I did put something in there for a few years down the road to, to support maintaining those.
Okay. But not within the next year?
Not in the next six years, do we have?
You have parking meter on here, parking meter replacements on here, but not until 2032.
Yeah, exactly.
Want to go for it?
Sure. I make a motion that we work with Central Chrysler Jeep Dodge to purchase a 2022 Ram 1500 for $32,049.
Should be 34, if you go all the way to that one.
Oh, yeah, yeah. With additional accessories included for 2600, with a total of 34,649.
And that'll be up to?
Up to, right, because we're with the trade-in values.
Right, with the trade-in.
One second.
Any discussion? I, I will support this. It does make me uncomfortable that we just did this large inventory project and completely missed a vehicle at this price point that we weren't planning to-
Right. And like I said, we haven't, we haven't purchased a new parking vehicle. It's been many, many years. It's always been used hand-me-downs. So, I mean, this vehicle is going to last for several years, because, you know, it's not going to have many miles put on it, so.
Yeah.
Several meaning 10, right?
Well, maybe less.
That would be nice.
I mean, the existing vehicle, you're saying is a 2015, and we're-
But it was a police vehicle. It was a-
Okay, it was a hand-me-down, so the-
Yeah, it was a primary police vehicle. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're going to shoot for, shoot for 10 years on that. And, you know, we'll, we'll update the plan accordingly to get that on the, on the inventory, so we don't miss it in the future.
Move the second in.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That's what we got.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Sorry for the, there and back again at the table. All right. Timing-wise, we, we've been sort of dancing around the next topic because of capital improvement. But Phil, chairman of the Capital Improvement Subcommittee of the Planning Board, here to talk to us with a CIP committee report.
So, yeah.
Yeah, come, come up here. We'll-
So Zach, you have one in your package?
No, I like it.
I think June's going to try and put it on the screen. She's trying to pass-
She has, in fact, done so.
There are handouts in the back of the room.
I can't see it, but, um, oh.
There are handouts in the back of the room as well.
Yeah, so for anybody who wants to follow along with what we're talking about, there are handouts around the Capital Improvement Subcommittee report in the, in the back of the room. So it is very small print. You'll have to put it close to your eyes.
It's also on the town website, which is more important.
Yes, yeah, there's a ver-
And will be for the indefinite future.
Yeah, this is a, just introing this even further, this is a new process that we're doing this year, which was a kind of a partnership.
It's been a while. The town did have a CIP years ago. It's been a while since the town has done it. And I think the-
Long enough that effectively this was from scratch.
Yes. There is a history. In, in the narrative with the CIP, there's a history that the CIP process was voted in by the town, I believe, in 1987. So we, the planning board does have authority granted by the town to conduct the CIP process. The CIP is, is a, it's a budgeting tool that, you know, we, we've, the, the long and the short of it is that we asked all the town departments for non-recurring capital items over a certain amount of money, and, you know, forecasting out in the next several years. And each-
Can I get you closer to the mic, please, just because-
I'll be happy to. Is this better?
Thank you. That's much better.
All right, thank you.
So the capital improvement program is intended to provide the, the select board and the budget committee a long-term view of capital expenses. The process, so we started with a volunteer committee, including several members of this table, some planning board members, and budget committee members. They are named on the, at the end of the first paragraph, if anyone's so inclined. The planning staff came up with the idea to use a Google Sheets document, which allowed each department head to have access to one page of a spreadsheet to enter their requests and priorities with years and costs. And, and then lock, you know, so each department only had access to their sheet. And then the master sheet, which kind of tallies them all together, was available, only accessible by planning staff and, and members of the CIP committee during the process. So our, what we've provided to the town, and at this point, this is a learning process for us. So this was the first year the CIP committee has, has done this. We hope to be as functional and, and add more next year. But for now, what we've got is a Google Sheet for you, which is on the town website. You can look at the, the last tab is the master CIP. I think that's what's printed off here. And I think what you'll find, the general structure is that, you know, the next six years, all of the proposed purchases by, that were submitted by departments have been summarized. There are a few that we recommended shifting slightly, or, and I think with Ann's suggestion, some of the purchases turned into lease purchases, just to spread costs out. Our goal was to provide a recommendation of funding, which levelized capital purchases to minimize the variability on the tax rate. So if you look at the bottom of the second page, there are three lines in green. And I think each one of them shows, we were able to get the total expenditures for a year to be just over $2 million for each one. We divided that rough by the current assessed values of town to show the tax impact for each year. Granted, the tax assessments may change in the future, but for now, in today's dollars, what you have is basically, you know, level funding of roughly over $2 million per year, which is very close to what is in the current year. We, we kind of did a retrospective and looked at all of the expenditures in this year's budget that would qualify as capital. Of note, I think you'll see the two lines right above the green, I believe, are the payments on existing debt service. So moving forward, this tool should provide us the ability to go forward without having to bond things. Hopefully, anything that would qualify for bonding will be put into the CIP, and we'll be able to plan on them in the future. But in the meantime, we have to consider the debt service on the existing bonds as part of this expenditure plan. One of the things we learned is that, you know, we did, the, the bottom group of expenditures is, is road reconstruction. And, and those projects, if you were to look at, for example, I think it's Emerson Street, there's a, an expenditure planned for the fourth year of the program. And what we did was to kind of even out the rec, the tax rate. We kind of split that expenditure. And rather than, the, the expenditure was originally much greater, but we, we had proposed, you know, that's an example where we split the cost into four different years and recommended capital, a capital reserve for that project. And putting some of the cost into previous years allowed us to bring the, the lower tax expenditures that were in those proposed years up to equalize it. So there's a little bit of flexibility that we've got with funding. If we can capital reserve one, one line item or two, a few line items, it allows us to kind of get that process, so.
And on roads in particular, we, having some capital reserves for those is beneficial as we seek grant funding opportunities and those kinds of things, because then we actually have some-
Yes.
-reallocated capital to put against a grant.
And there was a question earlier about road construction. And these, the, the costs that we have for road construction are estimates based on historical projects that the town has done. They do inclu, include both drainage and sidewalks where appropriate. So that's kind of the-
Which is why some of the, when you look at this, some of the prices, especially on, on in-town roads are very high, because the price per mile when you're doing-
Drainage structures and sidewalks and curbing, it's significant.
It's a little bit shocking, in fact, when you look at the prices around in-town roads.
Yes. So this is a preliminary presentation. What's up there is what we anticipate to provide to the board. The planning board has not reviewed and approved this yet. So the planning board processed, the planning board authorized the CIP, CIP committee to write this. We believe it's in a state that we will, will be approved. The planning board does need to review it on Thursday. And we anticipate that it will be approved, and we'll provide notice. If, if we need to make any updates, we can come back and, and update the board on what's been done. But if we don't hear anything from us, I suspect you'll be able to go ahead with what we've got on the, on the website now.
Does the planning board, are they having a hearing on that, or are they just discussing it as an agenda item?
Yeah, there will be a hearing. Do we have it, is it on, do we have a time for it? Do we know? Thursday night, 6 o'clock.
Thereabouts.
6:30-ish.
So this Thursday, September-
If any of members of the public would like to comment on the CIP, it is on the town website. The planning board will be holding a hearing on Thursday.
Can I ask a quick question? So what's a possib, possibly a bond in FY '26? It's just an assumption that we'll probably need-
So as the, as the bond that we currently have-
It's paid down.
Yeah, expires, right? So we'll have paid off that bond. We just put in a space of like, well-
If, if, if other bonds need to be done.
Conceivably, we might plan to have another bond around that.
Sure. Something has to be done.
Of course, the, the CIP process is, will be an annual, you know, refresh-
Right.
-to keep this tool up to date, to add things that we missed, to, you know.
I, I do want to commend, you know, everyone on the CIP committee, CIP committee that worked so hard on this process. I, I really think this was a much easier process than I thought it would be, primarily because Joseph's hard work with the, the Sheets platform. It kept it active. There wasn't, there wasn't much tab, you know, what, there wasn't, you know, handling a sheet of paper for each request that we would have to tabulate out later. It was a great-
It was very nice not to have a three-ring binder that was six inches thick.
For, for each member of the committee, though. So.
So as this gets changed each year, potentially, does this have to go back to the planning board for approval each year? Okay, so they would hold a public hearing each year?
Yes. Every, every year, we will start this process. And we do have at least a parent document we can start with, and hopefully our department requests won't change too much. But my, my goal and my, my hope is that this will be valuable enough to both the select board and the budget committee, that you will ask the, the department chairs to be strict about putting things into this, and that will help-
Yeah.
-help the town anticipate. I mean, there will always be exceptions. And, you know, the, the example that the, the police chief brought to you tonight is a, is a great exception. You know, based on my knowledge of availability of vehicles in the state pool, I think you made the right decision there.
Yeah, yeah. It, it, you know, it'll be tricky for us to get used to using a process like this. But I, having been through the budget process a couple times now, I think having this tool is going to make those conversations much easier. We're not, we're actually looking at a window of time that makes sense. We're thinking longer term. I think it'll be easier to be supportive of the projects. It, you know, if they're on this sheet, we've all said, yes, this is the prioritization. We put every single department head in the room. They all looked each other in the eyes and said, yes, we, we accept that we've moved this forward a year, so that you can move, you know, the, all of those things. They, they accepted that, that road construction was a priority, that we were going to invest over a quarter of the capital, you know, into roads. Over a quarter of the capital is debt service. And so I guess it's-
Yep.
-it's more like a third, once you start thinking about it, in terms of the actual money available to spend.
As much as I support the, the, the planning board and, and the CIP committee came together to do this, I would also like to commend Kathy, because she was doing this kind of on her own for the past several years without a CIP. And a lot of that fell on her shoulders. So thank you for the hard work that you did while we didn't have this document.
Yeah. I think this is going to be great. I look forward to the public hearing on, is it this Thursday? It's this Thursday, right?
Thursday, yeah.
Yes.
So do you revisit these numbers? Is that the yearly?
We won't revisit it until we start this process again next spring, after town meeting, when the planning board authorizes a new CIP committee to start this process again. And then we'll go back to department heads and say, this is, you know, please review what you put in last year, and if you need to make adjustments, you can. But, you know, our, our goal is to create, you know, a new, the next six years forecast. And every year, you, you know, the, the, the previous year drops off and becomes the current budget year, and you add another year of forecast in, so that you have a, a six-year rolling forecast to work with. And, and for now, we're doing six years. I mean, if it's, if this works and department heads like it, we can go to eight or 10. It gets less accurate. You know, I think right now, the, a six-year forecast is as accurate as we want to be.
The good news is, we did capture, wherever possible, again, tonight, we, we found that we missed something. So that, you know, it's inevitable. But when June and Joseph and Kathy met with the departments, they, they said, tell me all your capital items, right? There are things on this list-
There's an inventory.
-that don't have a year, right? They're not in the six-year window, but they are listed as like, you know, in 2032, we might have to deal with this, but it's-
We should be aware that we have this item that will wear out at some point.
Eventually we'll die.
It may not be forecast for replacement in the next six years, but we need to be thinking about it at some point.
And I think, yeah, I think that's going to be really great.
Good.
And timing-wise, CIP will happen late spring through the summer. Budget committee kind of steps in in the, in the late summer, early fall. And then the actual town budget process with the board starts at that point, and, you know, carries us through the town meeting, and then it gets voted on and actually approved for all those expenditures. Any capital items will go, will go on the warrant, right? So again, this is all recommendation. The board will use that recommendation to put together a warrant, and then the town will vote-
Yes.
-to actually approve the expenditure.
We, we still have to take all these items to the town for approval, to the, to the voters. But we, we at least have a plan that shows that we've, we've thought about this. We're not proposing, you know, $3 million this year and a million next year. You know, it's, it should be, our, our goal is that we, we have a plan for, you know, level funding and, and an equal tax rate every year, so that we shouldn't see huge increases.
And hopefully, we won't have, in the future, have large bonds to catch up, right? If we can stay on top of our equipment, and we know what we have, I think that's a better process for the town. Yeah, so it's a cyclical process, just making that point, so everyone's aware that, you know, each of these different groups has a different responsibility in the, in the financials. Uh, I'm seeing some hands from the back. Grace, do you want to approach the mic? I could just barely see the top of your head. I guessed it was you, and I succeeded.
Hi, Grace.
Lots of hard work here, obviously, and I really applaud you. Do you think in the future, this might be open to commissions and committees? On behalf of the Energy Commission, we were hoping to talk with the CIP group this past year.
If it's a town expenditure, we should, we should put it in.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Grace. Any other, I'd be happy to take questions if other people have them now. Otherwise, we can-
Yeah, if anybody has any other questions. Yeah, otherwise, we'll, we'll defer to Thursday night. Looks like there's none.
All right.
Thanks, Phil. Really appreciate your work on this.
Thanks for getting me in. I'm off to the school boardroom.
Okay. Well, staying on the topic of money and budgets, Mike and Mark, Mike Courier and Mark Halloran, to speak about the budget committee expectations for the 22-23 season.
Want us up there?
It's more comfortable if you come sit with us, yeah.
Hello, Bart.
Are ya?
He's an electric credit.
I have a pedal under the desk.
The process with the CIP was phenomenal. It really was what the town needed to give some direction. I know that, that working on- I know that, that working on the budget committee for the past three years, it's been difficult to know what the heck we're working with. So when asked, what do you cut? We don't know. And, and now we do know. And, and I think that process has been, has been great and I think this process will get better and better over time because there will be some little mishaps, but that's a work in progress. And then everybody starts thinking in the same way and now we're all playing on the same team, so. Mark.
Yeah, I just, last year we sort of felt incomplete, that we didn't really have a good sense of the town. This year, I think we feel with the CIP process and meeting with the town departments for over a year, I think we have a much better sense of that. What, what we would like from the board is your sense of expectation from us, whether that be, hey, don't go above 2% or don't do this or don't do that, but a sense of, of what you want delivered to you and when you want it. So that allows you to not have to do what you did last year. So it's, it's early September, so it's a good time to talk about that.
I think we, we've kind of discussed about being in a little closer contact throughout the year, so we're not looking at, you know, the last couple of months of the year and we've got to go talk to everybody and meet with them, but kind of having a finger on the pulse. Yeah, just pull that a little closer to you. I'm going to start singing here in a minute. But having kind of a finger on the pulse of how things are going. So if, if one of the department heads comes up with something that they think is going to be a problem, we know about it a little bit earlier and just being kind of aware, I think lets us all be able to kind of know what's going on, what we might have to look at. I just think it's waiting, you know, till a certain time of the year is too long. That's just, that's my, my personal thing. So, so I think this could be an incredibly cooperative process where we're all working together throughout the year. So I, I'm looking forward to it.
Mark.
We, we've had, have had the opportunity this spring and early in the summer to visit a number of the town departments without any acts hanging over ahead and, and really get to talk informally with the department heads. So that, that's been a very good exercise for us. So as I said earlier, I think we have a pretty good sense on, on where we are. And as Mike said, capital improvements committee is, is, is huge in terms of taking care of debt service and the capital outlay, which is right there. And we, we hear everyone loud and clear, we're not, we're not going to stray from that list. That's, that's where we are. It becomes us dealing with the operational budget.
Yep. Your second question is the easier one, which was about timing. Anne, did you put this, was this?
No, Kathy did.
Oh Kathy, Kathy put together a, a sort of outline of the process. Do you want to?
It's a tentative schedule for, for when the budgets are due to our office. Then we'll review them and then they, the budget should be to the budget committee by the end of September. We're using the Google Doc sheets as well now, so you'll be able to look at that online.
That's wonderful.
Thank you, Joseph, for setting that up for us.
I, I think that that's going to make a huge difference in the ability to just see and understand all of the data this year.
So the only books that you will see are going to be for the nonprofit committee, which is, so we'll have a book for the nonprofit committee, one for the board, and one for the budget committee. So that's it in those.
And then we'll, we'll get a, a link to the Google Sheet.
Once the department heads and Kathy's reviewed it.
Are you saying the board will get books too or the boards will get just the link?
You're going to get a book for the nonprofit.
Book for nonprofits, but for the rest of the budget, we're going to get a spreadsheet link.
Sure.
Locked. We'll put your budget on the end.
Great, thank you.
Is there anything in this schedule that's controversial? Or you said it was tentative, but.
It's, well, things change all the time. You can, just, just like Joe's priorities change all the time, he has ideas, what he wants to do. We have ideas of dates that these things should happen, but things come up and maybe it gets pushed off a week.
But as of right now, this, this feel, this schedule feels comfortable. There, are there any points in it where you're like, ooh, these dates are going to be a little tight?
No.
Great.
I think you have plenty of time. There's plenty of dates and we have plenty of time.
Feels like we're on top of it this year in a way that is encouraging. I mean, we'll end up behind. But right now it feels good, that's, it's nice.
True.
Your other question was about.
Basically the tax rate.
Expectations around tax rate.
Exactly. As we came out of the CIP, it was stabilize the tax rate and get the roads fixed. I mean, that was the clear message from that process, along with the other capital outlays that the department needs. So we, we got that loud and clear. The issue becomes what percentage increase, decrease, break even, depending on, on revenues, certainly that Anne works with. But just a sense from us, so, and you don't have to do that tonight, but just a, a sense that as we begin to get rolling, you know, and you get a sense from both schools where they're at and what it might look like, that's all.
It will give us a better handle too for all the department heads in terms of what they really have to have, you know, the basic thing that they need and then what they would like to have, but it'll give us a better idea working with them to understand, you know, their specific needs and things that maybe they can't go without, but then things that we may be able to push off a little bit if necessary to keep the budget within, within that percentage or two that we're looking at.
And you have collective bargaining requirements and insurance and those sorts of things that have to, have to be incorporated in, so.
Yeah.
We're aware of that.
And we're going to be dealing with inflationary costs this year that'll be sizable. I think it's great that we have extra information this year. It's great that we're on top of it. It's going to be, I think, a very challenging year to get to a budget because I don't think, in past years, I think we've been like, well, if the, if the tax rate goes up 3%, inflation's 3%, we can explain that to the town. I think if the budget went up 7% or 8% where inflation has been this year, I, I don't think the town is going to appreciate that kind of increase. So, I mean, my own gut feeling is the closer we can get to level funded, the more comfortable it's going to be for the community. I'm also a realist that we've got some challenges, so I, I don't know what that's going to look like when you dig in. And that's just my, you know, one perspective amongst the board, but I, I think we should try to be as conservative as we can be with this, with this budget because there's a lot of pressures on, on the townspeople.
The other thing is the departments are currently putting their budgets in, they're almost done, and then it will go to Kathy for review and then off to the budget committee. So potentially we could have a meeting where the board could actually look at the proposals but not make any recommendations. Maybe whatever your first meeting in is in October, you'll at least have a chance or second meeting to look at it and give them a better understanding of what you would like them to consider. You know, if they come in at $3 million more for the budget, you have an opportunity to say to them, take it out, cut it in half, you know? So I don't think that you're not quite ready to make that, as Mark said, tonight, that suggestion.
And in that scenario, Mr. Chairman, as long as we have a sense of, of what you're committed to, collective bargaining costs and things like that, we have that sense, then we won't waste our time in that area because we, we've made commitments as a community, so.
Yeah.
So do you want to have the budget committee back, your first or second meeting in October?
I think the first meeting in October would be great.
Meeting in October. By then Kathy will have reviewed and the department head should have entered everything they need to.
So we'll have sort of a first look.
Right.
Yeah, definitely not the finalized point, but a first look where we're like, okay, based on what we know, this is our starting point.
Does that work?
That's perfect. That's great.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Ike here? Ike is our, our next person. Is he on Zoom?
He sent in a letter to the board.
Yes.
It's in the.
So Ike, I was hoping he was here so he could pronounce his last name for me, but Ike Langendorfer. Took a shot and I got it. Wrote us a letter about, and there's a little bit of copier.
Yeah.
Gentlemen.
Yeah, so gentlemen, flash floods, many due to drought and the good number of inches of rain incites too much concrete as in Dallas and Houston. Where does the water get absorbed? New development process in Plymouth could cause floodplain, the same disaster. It's only a matter of time. That's what's with all the lights destroying the dark sky. So kind of two, two different points here. And then there's a side note. We're troubled last.
Last night's Plymouth lights were terrible.
Uh, last night's Plymouth lights were terrible. Thank you.
So his concern, I can tell you, is the, the, what do you call it? The tree cutting, the construction, whatever it is that's going on in Tenny Mountain Highway, taking down a lot of the trees and also the potential for more development that he's saying could affect, you know, like with the, the river and, you know, the floodplain and all that, you know? So he's, he's concerned with that.
Yeah, I appreciate his concern. In that particular area, the developer has been working very closely with DES and that project has been through many levels of review with the planning board. I, I don't know, is this board knows much more than, I mean, I think the planning board's really the place to go in terms of, of that piece and that project, but I don't know if there's any other comment around, around that project.
The planning board has made it a high priority to enforce stormwater management plans that are following EPA regulations. And the project, the, the project out on Tenny Mountain Highway where they did a very large clear cut has been thoroughly planned and supervised by, I don't know, Army Corps of Engineers and, and New Hampshire DES and, and it's all been approved. So they, you know, a, a lot of the asphalt pavement and, you know, a lot of the surface runoff is being handled through ground treatment, which is, you know, the state of the art.
I did tell him that the developer does have to go through a permitting process and would not be doing something he didn't have permits and permission to do, so.
Right. And in terms of lights, June, you may be able to speak to this, or Joseph, we do have some, I think we have some requirements around down-facing lights and that kind of thing? Is that true in the process?
So the town's site plan review regulations that the planning board adopts by statute, it's a planning board document, it doesn't go to town meeting for adoption, but with the board, actually on Thursday night is having a public hearing to review adopting new site plan review regulations with quite a, quite a bit of changes in there. One of the pieces is design standards and so we did look at lighting, but the town has had some statements in there previously that yes, new developments should have dark sky compliant lighting. Whether that's been the case or things change over time, I can't say that for sure, but there's a lot of street lighting in town. Campus generates a lot of glow in the night sky for safety. You know, they have a lot of streetlights or campus walkway lights too for safety purposes, obviously. Regarding the stormwater issues and the, the current development that's, people are asking a lot about on Tenny Mountain Highway, all that's happened there is tree cutting. There is a site plan that has been approved about a year and a half ago and they did get wetlands permits and our, and alteration of train permits, only to move dirt around basically. There's no end user yet, there's no pavement, there's no utilities actually going in. That would be a second phase of approval. Developer is very much aware of that and all he's doing at this point is cutting the trees, which he's allowed to do under timber, timber laws in the state of New Hampshire. So he actually hasn't really pulled a stump or done anything beyond what he did for the driveway for the logging operation. So that's all that's happening there now, but the actual site plan did a comment, look at flood storage and carefully engineered for looking at all of those items. They are allowed to do it. That's kind of the way, the way the world works. And we have, we do follow any guidelines for the, because we are part of, the town's part of the national flood insurance program, so any new construction has to be at least one foot above the flood level to protect the structure and the investment there.
Thanks, June. Any other commentary from the board on this item?
We have no jurisdiction over the university.
Well, that's true too, yeah. But they're, they're aware of, of downlighting too, when they want it well lit.
I'm sure they're, yeah.
Not just broadcasting light.
Anything else? All right, well, let's move to Kathy Ringline, safety concerns on Merrill Street.
Thank you. The concern is when you're coming up Merrill Street, the speed of the vehicles coming up now. I talked to the Plymouth Police Department, asked to put up one of those blinking ones, electronic, that would give the speed, show your speed. They suggest I come here and that you guys might have an option to increase signage or something. Seems that the vehicles cresting at the top by Merrill Place, going all the way to Randolph is where the speed is really high. And, I mean, it's not a little, it's a lot with the kids going to school, with the amount of kids now living on Merrill Street. You know, there's a lot of elementary kids walking. It's a, it's a concern and we didn't know if you had any suggestions or ideas of what we could do to help that. And it's not just the college kids, it's our residents that are hitting it pretty high, so.
My first question would be about enforcement. Have, how, have we been running any speed patrols or anything to that area?
Yeah, I mean, we do as best as we can with the amount of.
I'll ask you to come to the mic.
So enforcement, we do as best as we can with the amount of officers we have. We've been down a couple of officers. It's hard. We do get the highway safety grants for radar enforcement. Our officers are working a lot of hours, they're getting burnt out. You know, it's hard to, to force them to work. It's just we're really busy, down a couple of officers, hiring another officer that's going to start October 3rd. We're doing our best with how many officers we have. I know it used to be a bigger concern, people used to call Merrill Street to Emerson, but Emerson is so bad, I don't know if a lot of people are still doing that or not, but.
I don't know why anyone would choose to drive on Emerson.
By mistake.
Pretty bad, yeah.
Find yourself on Emerson.
We do have the radar signs. The only thing is, is we do have to install permanent posts to put the signs out there. We can work with the highway department and see if we can put a, a post out there and, and run the radar sign for a little while. It's definitely an option we can do.
It would give us more data on, you know, it wouldn't just be anecdotal of, you know.
Yep. I can work with Joe and see if we can get a, a post put in there and.
What is the speed limit? Is it 30 or?
Is it, is it 30? 30.
Yeah.
It's 30. Until you get down to Merrill Street Extension, then there's a school zone sign for school zone. But yeah, but that's definitely something we can do.
Since you're sitting there, I, I know we had another email from Donna, I forget her last name, over on Beech Hill.
Yes, so I'm going to work with Joe. Doctor, uh, Joe sent me a message today, I was working on the budget, but yeah, we're going to work on signs down there.
Okay.
Yep. And the same thing, we could maybe put a post there and move one of our signs and get, collect some data too. Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think probably the most effective thing, which we can't really accommodate, is to sit an officer down there, see if a police.
If we had more, we'd get absolutely good.
But that's the beauty of the signs is not, not that it's as probably as determined as an officer, but we get the data, we find out, you know, what actually it's, it's 1% of the, the traffic or maybe it's 90% of the traffic.
Well, I could tell you if someone's going 30 miles an hour, which is the speed limit on Merrill Street and you're sitting there, it's going to look like someone's going way too fast, no doubt. and you're sitting there, it's gonna look like someone's going way too fast, no doubt. And tactically, as long as they're not harming someone, it's, it's the speed limit, right? So, but
Thirty does feel fast on residential streets.
Is fast.
Yeah, it does feel fast.
Yep. But yeah, I can definitely work with Joe and see if we can get a post and collect some data on Merrill Street.
Kathy, do you have another comment?
I agree with that. I mean, it does seem that if you're going thirty, it would be fast, but I'm talking a big difference between, you can see the cars going thirty and the ones that, you know, are speeding it up, it's.
With, with us getting those radar signs in there and starting to collect data, would that, would that make you feel?
That'd be great. Anything would be great. A sign, kids, uh, I don't know what you're doing up there, slow.
Is there any sort of kids in play, play sign around that area?
Joe might know.
Joe, yeah, Joe, I don't, because you're right that that, that is a section of town that has a, a lot of children, uh, my own children are in that area a lot. Is there any kids at play signs down, on that road, around that road?
I think down, further down, we get towards the end.
Get to the extension down there, but not as far up as Merrill Place or anything like that. Thanks, Joe. Yeah, please, and identify yourself.
Maggie Mumford, Plymouth. Um, I used to live on Merrill Street. Kathy's concern, I think, is very valid, and if you recall, two weeks ago, uh, you agreed to reduce the speed limit or to post a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit because of dirt and gravel and that getting thrown up on Bell Road. I would submit that, uh, for safety of children, that also should be considered in this highly concentrated area of kids.
Yeah, I think that's worth consideration. I, I don't know what the rest of the board feels like, but if we're gonna put the sign in place, I, I want to see the data first and then consider that second, but.
You want a motion?
Depends on what the motion is, but yeah, I, I always would like a motion.
We, uh, set the speed limit on Merrill Street at twenty-five miles an hour.
Ted?
All right, I'll second it.
All right, so we do have a second. It's always fun to get to a vote. Uh, any discussion from the board?
Can we kind of like defer it to Chief of Police to, you know, see if, um, if that would be like the, the best use of, well, not best use, but.
Well, he just testified that thirty was pretty fast.
Well, thirty is fast. Um, if you guys wanna hold off and work with Joe, we can put the sign out there and see what the data is, what the speeds are.
Yeah, that seems to make sense, grab the data first.
My, yeah, my feeling would be to grab the data first, but I'm, um,
I'll withdraw my motion.
I think if we come back and see that the data is that there's a lot of.
How long will it take?
Yeah. All we have to, I mean, it's town road, so all we have to do is get a post in there and just move one of the signs.
Okay.
And then how long do you, like thirty days analysis or?
Yeah, a month's worth of data, probably decent.
That sounds fair to me.
Okay.
Please, yeah. Hit the mic though, so I don't get in trouble with Colleen.
Is the data you're speaking of, like one of those things, just to check what the speed is, not to put one of the things up to tell you to slow down? Because obviously that would slow them down.
Yeah, so that the, the signs do collect data, and so signs do tell people to slow down. But it collects the data of them when they first hit the sign.
Okay.
So it does collect car counts and average speeds and.
Thank you.
It's really, because we get, we get both, right? So you get to kind of see the effect of them. And you also, you get that over time, so that if, you know, in the first week that it's there, we see everybody's doing forty or fifty on the road, and then, you know, four weeks later, everybody's doing thirty, then we can actually see that the deterrent worked as well.
Another thing too, I mean, we have like a twenty-five mile an hour, uh, speed limit on, on Highland when, when necessary, like during school.
Uh, so for Highland Street, it's, so it's twenty for school zone.
Twenty?
Right, only, it's twenty in the school zone, but not on Highland overall, yeah.
And it's during certain times.
Chase On Road's twenty-five.
I'm repeating, Chief, and it's during certain times.
Well, I think, you know, Morse Road's twenty-five as well. I, I remember, um, if, you know, the perception of twenty-five seems to be fast as well. Because the people live on Morse, you know, where, same issue, you know, like slow down when you're driving through Morse Road, and it just seems like it's a perception thing, but in some ca, in most cases, or some cases, but.
Yeah, I mean, in some cases it is legitimately people going too fast, but I, I think the data is gonna help us to have a, a more productive conversation in a month or so.
Actually, if you wanna take a look at the pavement on Fairgrounds Road and Bloom Lake Road and Smith Bridge Road and Quincy Road, it's paved with rubber, basically. If you wanna, if you wanna see what's going on out there.
I was just trying to get the, you know, where are we going with that, but you mean tires? It took me a while to get that one. Yeah, okay.
Any more discussion on, on, uh, safety concerns on Merrill Street? Thank you. Uh, next up, Grace Garvey with an update on LED lighting project schedule, Board of Selectmen, Plymouth Energy Commission site visit for qualified sites, so two topics.
That's, yes, thank you, that was all kind of blurred into.
Kind of blurred into one slashed sentence, but.
So updating on the LED project specifically at the highway department. So Joe was kind enough to look into the budget and discovered that he had enough money to put upfront, um, to do the LED upgrades at the highway department building, and then I just got word today that this, the co-op has approved the fifty percent rebate. So the project's gonna be like two hundred and fif, uh, twenty-five hundred bucks. And, um, Bert is prepared to, if we get Joe's blessing and the board's blessing, start looking at, putting in some sample lighting fixtures as early as tomorrow. That's sort of hot off the press news.
Joe, how are you feeling about that?
Yeah, we sent him an email today, he's supposed to show up tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm taking that as your endorsement.
Yeah, thanks for everybody for the support on that.
That's great.
It's gonna save the town about eleven hundred bucks a year. Every little bit counts, right?
Absolutely.
And then the second part of that is that, I'm sorry, Bill?
Oh, it's, it's gonna be a two, a two-year max pay, payback.
Correct.
A year and a half or two, two years, so that's great.
Yeah. And then, so the second part of what we wanted to talk about was, um, we wanna get the select, those select board members who want to come out on a site tour of the, what we've identified as the best and most appropriate town-qualified lands possibly for a solar array. And we gave you the list last time we were here. And I know, um, Kathy and Anne have tried to do that on their own, and I figured, I got my book here, I have Ted's um, dates available, and I don't know if we should do the, try and schedule it in this forum, I know Ted's on Zoom there, or if I should send a doodle poll out to the, those board members who haven't been out on those sites yet. Uh, what would be appropriate at this point?
So the dates that are being recommended are September twenty-sixth anytime, twenty-seventh anytime, twenty-eighth after four, or the thirtieth after twelve.
Since before four.
We also added, um, Monday, the nineteenth. Monday, the nineteenth was added, which I didn't send it to you. Um, the only block that isn't available is ten-thirty to twelve-thirty.
So after lunch, after twelve-thirty. Any of those dates work for members of the board?
I'd have to look at the dates. What, what were the dates again?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven anytime, twenty-eight.
Twenty, twenty-six is really good for me.
I was just gonna say the opposite.
Oh.
Twenty-six is a mess.
Twenty-eight anytime before four, the thirtieth anytime after twelve, and the nineteenth anytime after twelve-thirty.
The thirtieth is really good for me too.
Thirtieth is good for me, but I see Mary Ann shaking her head.
I can't do anything after ten.
Any, any of those days?
I could do the twenty-seventh any day.
Twenty-seventh anytime.
Anytime, the Tuesday.
Can, can we go later in the day, like a four o'clock kind of thing?
I could be available on the twenty-seventh.
Oh, no.
Yeah, like, uh, at, at four?
Twenty-seventh at four o'clock?
I cannot.
I thought we were so close, Ted.
There's also the twentieth available in the afternoon, that would be next week. I'm just throwing it out there.
Can we have Ted just call the, um, to work with you, just to set up a meeting that he can go and walk with you and not the entire board? This Ted? Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, that would work. My, my challenge on Tuesday and Thursday is I, I class and it's a heavy meeting day.
So the four of you can go at four o'clock on the twenty-seventh?
Where are we meeting?
Here.
For how long? Cause it's gonna be like an hour and a half, something like that?
How long it takes you to walk?
Yeah, it's, uh, like an hour and a half probably, I think.
Four P M?
They're kind of like, the sites are pretty far.
Yeah, just the travel.
It's just a big loop. It's just really a big loop. Uh, yeah, maybe an hour. And we can certainly carpool if everybody's comfortable with that.
We'll post that on the twenty-seventh at four, here.
Right, seventh at four, um, and I'll work with Ted to find another date for the two Teds and some one or two people from P E C.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Grace.
Thanks, Grace.
Looking forward to seeing those sites.
Oh, is, is Joe, is Joe's involved, correct? Joe's gonna be on the?
I didn't ask him.
Joe, do you wanna, uh, either walk with the board or, or try to walk with Ted to see those sites, or?
I don't, I don't have my schedule in front of me, so I'm gonna just try.
Okay, well, tentatively, you are absolutely invited to, uh, to, to walk with us on those. If they, if they work for you.
Especially that one site that would, might affect your.
Right, just, yeah, in particular where I, I, yeah, that's the one that would be good for you to really understand where they're talking about there. Because that's a, a really important site for highway. Maddie Layton, Chamber of Commerce. Chamber membership and mitigation for merchant disruption during South Main Street construction. That would be fantastic. Chair or podium, but I always think the chair is comfier, yeah.
Thanks very much. My name is Maddie Layton, and I am the new executive director of the Central New Hampshire Chamber of Commerce. If you're not familiar with our chamber, we serve twenty-three towns in five areas, including the town of Plymouth. So I'm here tonight to talk about two things. First, I would like to ask the town of Plymouth to rejoin the chamber. The town has been a member of the chamber in the past, but has not been in the last few years. And I'd also like to offer the chamber's assistance to partner with the town, with Plymouth State University, and with any other business organizations like Explore Plymouth, to think about mitigating the impact of next summer's construction on our downtown businesses. We've heard some uncertainty from our members, I wouldn't necessarily say it rises to the level of concern, but they, talking about wanting to hear a plan and wanting to have, um, you know, some positive messaging in place, and the chamber would love to be involved in that and give back to the town in that way. I know it's been a rough couple of years for Central New Hampshire businesses, and the chamber is working really hard to meet our mission, which is both to service the channel for business and community connections and to fuel the economic engine of Central New Hampshire. So, we're not looking backwards, we're looking forwards. We're building on the foundation that our former director Frank Cutirella built over his long tenure with the chamber, and I think probably most people in this room know Frank, so, um, we give him a nod for all the hard work he's done. We've identified a number of priorities, five priorities for this fiscal year, which include developing our board, uh, further developing our board, and developing new opportunities for members to engage with and serve the chamber, ensuring our financial sustainability and, um, stability, strengthening and growing partnerships with different organizations, planning for our future. But I think the thing that matters most to the town tonight is hearing about our number one priority, which is both demonstrating the existing value of chamber membership and showing how we can add new value. So I think you all, I see you, you received the packets that I sent. I don't know if you want me to quickly, um, highlight some of the initiatives that we're, we're working on that I think demonstrate our commitment to demonstrating value.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great, well, we're, um, so I also work for, I work half-time for the chamber and half-time for the Grafton Regional Development Corporation at the Enterprise Center at Plymouth, so, um, that gives us a lot of opportunities to collaborate and partner with GRDC. And one of the things that we're doing is working on a great workshop program, it's gonna be a series of free workshops. GRDC has often done these in the past as well, so they're educational, skill-based, they're free for individuals and business owners. Some of the topics that we've identified so far include financial literacy for small businesses, which is the day after tomorrow, if anyone wants to sign up. Collaborative branding and revitalization techniques for small town business districts, so some of you may know Glenn Rummler, who has a lot of great ideas about how businesses on our towns can work together to revitalize our downtown areas. Things like building a budget using Excel, introduction to QuickBooks, retirement planning for small businesses, creating a great employee handbook, and especially important to a lot of our businesses, employee recruiting techniques for today's difficult job market. So that's some, that's the first thing that we're working on. Um, we're also working to develop a joint marketing program, so one of the things that I heard when I, when I stepped into this position was, well, I heard a couple of things. One was that the people who don't live in Plymouth said, everything you do is in Plymouth. And the people who are in Plymouth said, you don't do enough for Plymouth. Um, but the other thing I heard is, you're really focusing on economic development, but you're not doing the work to, to bring in the tourism and travel that the chamber used to do, so we're looking at developing a joint marketing program for member businesses, and it's gonna have a couple of elements. One of them will be a rack card that participating businesses are included on, and it'll be at, um, the state welcome centers, and also a full-page ad in the White Mountain Attractions Guidebook. And we're going to be applying for a joint, uh, promotion program funding from the state, so that's a grant. So that'll offset up to half of that cost, so it makes it really affordable for member businesses. And municipalities can be included in that as well. Um, a couple of other things we're doing, a, a new type of event called a member showcase, I think a lot of people here have probably heard of our business after hours, which is a kind of business-to-business networking opportunity. Um, member showcases are more about inviting people in to see your businesses, and we've had two so far, and they're going really well, and people are already signing up for more of them, so we're kind of expanding the different kind of opportunities we have. We're also bringing back, which you may remember, our popular tourism and travel seminar. So we usually do that in January, it's a partnership with PSU. And, uh, the New Hampshire Director of Travel and Tourism, Lori Harnoy, has already agreed to come and be our keynote speaker. And we're kind of hoping to make it a more dynamic event as well. We're going to offer, we hope to offer tabling where tourism and travel-related organizations and businesses can also give out information about what they do. So it'll be kind of a mini trade show setup. And finally, we also heard that people don't see us. So we've kind of renewed our commitment with our board, our officers, um, and our, myself, the executive director, to be present in the surrounding communities at events or volunteering, making appearances, having a table, uh, at things like National Night Out, the Ashland Fourth of July Celebration, the Holiday Parade here in Plymouth. So, and not only does it, um, allow us to give back to the community, but it also lets us hear from people who may not be members about what the community needs and what their concerns are. So it kind of serves a dual purpose. So I just wanna close with a few reasons why I believe the town of Plymouth should join the chamber. First of all, we're almost entirely funded by membership dues, and the support of municipalities like Plymouth helps us continue to foster economic success in our region, and it also shows businesses that the chamber is import, an important part of our community. In addition, out of the, um, almost a hundred people who've joined so far this year organizations, almost fifty percent of chamber members are located in Plymouth, so we're giving a lot of value back to the Plymouth community. Um, and finally, the town lists the Chamber of Commerce on your website, and how you have a link to our website, and I think that demonstrates that the town does see the chamber as an important part of the business community. And so we'd like to invite you to rejoin the chamber this year at a cost of six hundred dollars. There isn't, uh, there's an invoice, I believe, also attached to the packet that I provided.
I think that chamber link was like from ten years ago, we just haven't updated it yet.
Oh, no, it looks, it goes right to our site, I'm very happy it's there. We don't want that to change. Does anyone have any questions that I can answer?
So you mentioned, um, where did I see it? Mitigation for merchant disruption. What's your, uh, mitigation for merchant disruption?
Well, for one thing, we do have Plymouth State University with large parking lots that aren't used as much in the summer, and they also have shuttle buses, so it makes sense to me that if there is gonna be impact on parking, and I'm not completely. and I'm not completely familiar with the plan, that it might make sense for us to start talking to PSU about whether we could come to an agreement with them to use some of that parking and transport people if, you know, if there are temporary or summer-long disruptions to parking. I also was talking to Alex Ray the other day and I mentioned this and he said, oh, and you know, I have that lot down there too. He rents that lot to the town, I mean, to the school during the year, but he said it would be available in the summer, so that's another option. But I think, you know, starting to think about this now would, um, really get us ahead of the curve in terms of, um, creating a positive perception with merchants. I also talked to someone who just went to Lebanon and apparently they had a similar project this summer. And it was quite difficult to get to businesses, but when this person went into the businesses and they said, oh wow, this must be really hard. The merchants were very positive. Clearly, they kind of had a, um, a united message. And more than one of them said, well, you know, it's a little difficult, but isn't it great that we have this great improvement happening in our town? So that, having that positive message out there can also make a difference in terms of how, um, the situation is perceived. And we can build that. We can create that.
Yeah, we have been speaking with PSU. We actually have another meeting with them about parking and using many of those, their lots during the summertime or during their breaks.
Great.
So those, those are, um, ongoing.
If there's anything that chamber can do to be involved with that, we would be very happy to be involved.
Sure, maybe we'll include you. We're looking and speaking with Don Jutton, um, for contact for water and sewer. Getting a group together. We spoke the other day. Um, maybe we'll include you in that as far as, uh, traffic control, parking, things like that during the whole South Main Street project.
That'd be great. Thank you so much. All right, anyone else? Anything else they can share?
Well, I met with Maddie in my role in Transport Central. And when she kinda came up with that idea of mitigation involving the university, I thought that was a, a no-brainer. I mean, it just sounded like a really great way to engage the university and, and also the university also wants to engage with Transport Central, so. Yep, win-win.
It does seem like the effectiveness of the chamber will be more powerful than, than individual businesses trying to have, you know, I mean, I know that you have the group, but it's just one more voice that represents a larger group instead of just a.
So Maddie and I have spoken, dealt with Frank a lot, um, during his years. Um, the struggle for businesses and, and you know, is the, is the, um, promoting of Plymouth itself. We used to have a Plymouth Chamber of Commerce and it sort of got sucked up to, probably made sense at the time. Um, but as a business owner, we struggle with the worth of it. Um, I'm no longer a member because there really wasn't, um, it didn't do anything for my business. I'm hoping with new blood, um, some new energy that changes.
We're working on that for you, for sure.
Happy to hear that.
I think the new blood plus the, the relatively new location at the Enterprise Center and your dual ro, uh, role in, at the Enterprise Center, I think it's, uh, a really good.
I'm particularly interested in collaborating with the, the, uh, chamber and the university and, uh, town committees like energy and conservation and tourism and marketing the town. And I, I think it could be beneficial to us.
Great, well, the chamber, I would be, always be happy to meet with you and chat about any ideas you have and, you know, ways we might all work together.
Kathy, do you have thoughts on the, uh, membership around the, around the chamber?
I do not. I mean, I know that we used to be a member and back then it was felt that the chamber wasn't doing anything for Plymouth. So that's why they dropped off the membership. And I did understand that the chamber, there used to be a kiosk. I think it might've been the one at McDonald, the old McDonald's lot.
It's gone.
It's gone now, but I understood there was one that the chamber used to fill. And that stopped too, so.
It was a welcome, it was Welcome Plymouth or it was like, I thought it was a Plymouth thing too.
Yeah, we had a Welcome Center in Camden where we owned a building that that, we had to divest ourselves of that several years ago. It was very expensive.
A joint, uh, wasn't Waterville Valley or Camden or whatever and, and Plymouth and was, I thought it was a joint Welcome Center at the ice rink.
There was, there was something there.
Oh, there was, yeah, there is a Welcome Center.
But you're right, that, that kiosk at the McDonald's parking lot for a long time.
It used to be filled, yeah. And that stopped.
Brochures in there and all kinds of information. I mean, we're talking 15 years ago, probably.
Yeah, cause I know more recently we had the center in Camden and, and there were people that were quite disappointed that the chamber made the decision to sell that property, but it was, it was not sustainable. We could have that property or we could have a chamber. Couldn't have both.
Not to belabor this, but 30 years ago, there was a little Welcome thing right down there at the corner and that was manned. Somebody there, yeah. Anyway, those were the days, boy.
So thank you for your time.
Are you, um, does the board wanna consider?
I, I would make a motion that we join.
Uh, it feels like at the price point of $600, i- if they can help with communication or, if that was the only thing we got asset, was some help with the communication around downtown, that's, there's probably enough value just there, at my own two cents. Sorry, there's a, there's a motion.
Wait for a second.
That would have been my second.
I'll second that.
And which board member wants to volunteer to be the board rep to the chamber? We used to have a rep.
Positions, something like that, from, from each municipal member, do they assign a rep that acts on behalf of the town for chamber? Or what, or how do you do that for municipality?
Uh, typically, my understanding is that's my role, but if, um, if there's, I mean, I could talk to the board. We have every Tuesday morning, we have a leadership team meeting and I could talk to them if, if there's someone that would be a good fit with the town. Because, you know, I'm one person and I work half-time, so if we could find a, a board member who would like to be the full-time liaison, I would definitely support that.
It's just a board rep to your chamber.
Right.
You know, that would come back to our board with things that you have going on that, you know, maybe.
Oh, so you would have a board member that comes to our meetings?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
That would represent, represent the rest of our.
How do you have to be looking for board members?
Who's on your board now?
Uh, you're gonna make me go off the top of my head. Our president is Brooke Wakefield. Um, our vice president is Sarah Kate. So Brooke Wakefield lives in Plymouth and works in Waterville Valley where she's the director of recreation.
Committee.
Um, our vice president is Sarah Kate. Kate Travel, her, um, husband is the interim president of, uh, Lakes Region Community College. They're a member. Um, our treasurer is Jen Duncan from Service Credit Union. Our, um, secretary is Amy Lee from Bank of New Hampshire. And then members at large are Cassie Stokes from Lakes Life Realty, Mike Bag from PepsiCo. I'm letting some out. Corey Hart is our past president from Woodsville Guaranty Savings. And we have Kate Tarbox from Spear Memorial Hospital. I believe that's everyone. And then Heidi Pettigrew is our administrative support person who manages marketing.
The Tuesday mornings, what time?
Our leadership meeting on Tuesday mornings is at nine. And then we have board meetings once a month on Thursday mornings at 9:15. I can provide that information.
Are you free? Not in the oven, no? So, we had a.
Did you second?
Yes, he did.
I did, yeah. Yep.
So this was all in discussion. Uh, I'll, I'll just call the vote on it. Uh, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no people left.
Anyone you wanna appoint to be liaison and attend those meetings when they can?
I would like to be. I don't know if it's a conflict though. I might have a, I do have a vested interest.
It's up to you. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that'd be a problem, but.
I don't have, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
All right, well, thank you so much. I greatly appreciate it.
Right, that's true.
Thank you, Maddie.
So we'll add, add Mary Anne to your email list.
First gotta cough up a check.
Okay, next up, we have, uh, a request for a proclamation in honor of Childhood Cancer Awareness Week, which runs September 25th, 2022 through October 1st, 2022. This was submitted to us by, uh, Kids Cancer Connection, Stephen Firestein? Firestein? I don't know if Stephen's probably not on any of our connections, but. I don't see anything. It's a long email with a lot of links, so I'm not necessarily gonna try to read it, uh, cause it, it would be complicated. But in general, uh, they're, they're, he's writing to request a proclamation recognizing September 25th through October 1st as Childhood Cancer Awareness Week in Plymouth. And that's, that's pretty much it. We have the proclamation here.
Could we make a motion for that?
Yes.
Make a motion that we agree to, um, proclaim the week of September 25th through October 1st be Childhood Cancer Awareness Week.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Well, that was an easy one. Uh, June Hammond Rowan and Joe Perez, uh, some project updates.
So we sent you a memo that hopefully you've had a chance to read. Um, did you get it? So about, uh, Loon Lake Road, Culvert, 10-year planning from the Hampshire DOT and, um, and a possible request about, uh, the old Frontenac subdivision road. So I think you've read, if you've read the memo, do you have questions for us? We do have one other thing to update you that didn't make it on the memo, we forgot, but. Um, are there any, so basically the real quick summary is we, um, the DES Culvert Flood Risk Assistance Grant Program, we did get partial funding for our request, so we have some funds for, um, the engineering work to go forward with that. So we are working to move ahead to get, um, follow the proper process, cause it's federal money, um, to do a request for qualifications to get started on that. So hopefully we'd have engineering and design work done in 2023, um, and then we'd have some more time. And/or, again, the CIP might change already, cause then there might be some options for the town to fund, um, construction, which is estimated around 272,000. That was the most recent estimate from this summer. But we did get, um, 51,893 to cover the engineering work, so.
Will that 51,000, uh, cover, fully cover the design and engineering, or is there like a partial match on that from our side?
It's 100% funded, so there's no match required from the town. And the estimate we had from, um, KV Partners, it should rough, I think it was just a few dollars short, so it should be, I think we'll be in good shape for it. The one thing to note is that that money also covers construction inspection, which was about around, I think, 20,000 if I remember right. So, we may not spend all of that until we actually get the money for construction, but then it's a good piece to have. Actually, it's a good percentage of the total award, you know, so.
Will, will we have to vote to accept those funds at some point?
I think you already, um.
Yes, I do.
You already had a public hearing to.
Oh, we did?
Accept it, yep.
I don't think you did to accept it, to authorize the application. We're still waiting for the grant agreement to come from governor and council. So that one we have, it's on our radar.
Yes, you will have, anything over $10,000, you have to have a public hearing.
That was a recent award, so, and I wanna give Joseph credit for really pulling together the application for that. It was kind of a quick thing that we did and it, it worked out. There's only four, four, um, they only had a million dollars to give out and only four communities out of 34 applications were awarded, so we did well.
That's fantastic.
And then likewise on the 10-year plan, uh, we, it's a fairly simple application. Again, Joseph did all the work really to pull it together, uh, to look, and we came and gave you an, an update on priority projects. So we're looking at around the armory, the kind of rise in the road there. It's been a wish of the town for at least 20 years to make some safety improvements there, adding sidewalk. And in essence, uh, there's, it still isn't, it's just in the very early stages. Needs to go through the Transportation Advisory Committee of Lakes Region Planning. That will be in October. Um, but the good news is, we, they are, um, a little different process here, trying to get better cost estimates. So Lakes Region Planning has actually hired HEB engineers. We had a site visit last week with a number of people, including Joe from Highway. We walked the whole site, um, and the value of that work is $11,650 that Lakes Region is paying for. I think they have money from DOT to work on better cost estimates as these applications go forward into the 10-year planning process. So we'll know more, um, later this fall, whether we make it through that first round within the Planning Commission. And we'll take it from there, but at least even if we don't, aren't successful, we have some pretty strong preliminary engineering and scope working with HEBs. We've been already in touch emailing with the engineer there and have a plan for meeting in October. As we work on a presentation to make our case in front of the Transportation Committee, so.
And this is a project that's eight, 10 years out, right, where?
It's a two-year site, two years to get it on the plan and then it's a 10-year plan, so you're probably looking at 12-plus years out, so. Long ways away, but at least, um, you know, because it's a state highway, it'd be 100% funded by the state. We just have to get it in the system. So, and then what, if it does make it through the Planning Commission side, then there'd be a series of hearings through governors, Advisory Committee on Transportation, um, governor, you know, executive counselors host those. They've done them here in town to make. So, you know, letters of support and attending those and putting in a good word if we get to that point, so. So the last item was we met with Jeff Hiltz. Um, he, as far as I know, has not yet submitted a letter, but he has expressed interest in having the town take over maintenance and of the, um, the roads. So Chatteran Lane, Point of View Drive and Ski Lift Lane. We gave him the road acceptance policy. We would have to have the town engineer look at that. He would pay for all that. There's, the whole process is spelled out in that policy. So I just wanted you to know in case you heard about it, um, you know, the, there's a lot would need to be done before the town would accept that, including producing a deed, which would need legal review. So we went over all of that. Um, and the next step was for him to make a formal request to the select board. So I guess we just wanted to let you know that if you get that request, we kinda started the ball, you know, in terms of like, informing him what he needed to do and then we'll take it from there. We'll get money, hold an escrow, help pay for the town engineer, thorough review of the road. He'll have to do construction, similar to Martin Estates, which is still not finished, um, that process, uh, to bring the road up to town standards. And there's definitely some things that would need to be done there, so.
Does, does that actually go back to the, to the town for a vote, or does the select board have authority to?
You have authority per, uh, vote back 20-some-one years ago or something to follow this process and then the select board would vote to take on those roads.
All right. And we also have the last update on here that's not on your, um, not on your memo. The Stormwater Asset Management Program, which, uh, the board held a public hearing to accept $30,000 grant, uh, from DES some months ago. Uh, this project is, is getting started. We just had a kickoff meeting with our engineering consultant, DPC Engineering, uh, as well as Sharon Knoll from Department of Environmental Services. So, as that process continues to move forward, the next sort of major milestone and what we're sort of, our, our main point tonight, we have on the 6th of October at 6:30 at the Planning Board Meeting, we will be having a, uh, sort of public meeting, public outreach session, where our goal will be to give the public sort of an overview of what this project is all about. At its most basic, it's, it's, uh, a system for managing those 1,000 catch basins Joe mentioned and all the other stormwater infrastructure the town has. Um, it's a, it's a big, you know, it's a big asset that the town owns and this, this will be about how to manage that, how to maintain it, how to, you know, prioritize, uh, and give the citizens a good level of service. So this will be about generating a vision statement and really, uh, you know, we'll have the engineering firm there. So we really hope to see, you know, the public, everyone, the board members who, who are interested in that. We expect it'll be about an hour. Uh, overall, it could be, could be less, but start off with a presentation and then, you know, hopefully to maybe get some feedback from community members about, uh, the vision for, you know, this project going forward and, and how we want to, uh, you know, apply it to our stormwater system.
Great.
Yeah.
Any questions? Thank you.
Great updates all around. Thank you. That brings us to Kevin Pierce.
This proposal has no dollars attached to it today.
The cat. There's a letter in your package from them.
There is, yeah.
Deputy produced a nice cover letter for us. We're facing some significant infrastructure work needed if we're gonna continue our operation at 42 Highland Street and 46 Highland Street. work needed if we're going to continue our operation at 42 Highland Street and 46 Highland Street. Particularly when we started to develop the FY '24 budget, we realized that we think it's time to take a step back, if you will, or a pause on how much money do we want to put into that 60-year-old facility? And I think, or we think, one of the solutions is to reactivate, if you will, our Needs Assessment Committee that we had some years ago, to look at the space needs. What, what services do we provide? And, and future needs. What location or location should we be at? And of course, dollar figures, you know, attached to that. Or can we work with the site and the, and the buildings that we have? We think we know the answer to that, but I think it's important to bring in stakeholders from the community, builders, the town office, obviously, somebody from your board perhaps, on that committee. Deputy, do you want to speak about some of those infrastructure challenges?
Uh, yeah, so.
Please.
Uh, I've gone through the building, spent a lot of time investigating in the past, uh, kind of dug into our files. Obviously, in 2013, we purchased the 80, presently 82-year-old house next door to buy us a little bit of time with our staff and challenges, as well as, uh, honestly, our, our business challenges. We had to get out of the station. We had enough room. The infrastructure was very poor. So we got into the house. The town has invested a lot of money into making the house work, and we've done very well with uh, making it work. But we're still facing constant challenges. For example, the electrical, which I referenced in my letter, you know, we have a lot of electrical challenges. We have a lot of, uh, room challenges, and to provide and maintain a professional atmosphere is challenging, to say the least. So our, my biggest concern really is the present station, the older side. We gotta do something. We have failing infrastructure in the building, and it's even worse. I, I understand the building was originally built to be a temporary structure, and we certainly got our money's worth out of it. So we're focusing on that. I think it's time to, uh, you know, you guys ref, uh, the board referenced a needs assessment for the town. Um, in 2011, we brought, there was a needs assessment done before that, but it was obvious that the police station, fire station needed to be addressed. We brought it to the town, I think, two years in a row. Uh, missed by Merrill, uh, very small margins. It, the problems that existed then have only compounded and gotten worse. I'm trying to address the issues with the roof. I called two contractors. One of them won't touch it. He goes, "Yeah, I fixed your roof years ago. I ain't going up there again. I'm not touching that. You want a solution? Blow up the building and rebuild it." So I kind of chuckled. I was like, okay. Talked to another one. Same problem, same concerns. Uh, walls are rotted out. Uh, we have, you know, my letter's very specific to some of the major concerns, uh, more so the protection of the personnel in that building and equipment. We have over three and a half million dollars of emergency equipments in that building. We don't know if there's going to be a problem during the night with it, and there's no way to know until it's too late. That's a lot of money to risk for this town. So that's, that's the major concerns. Basically, what we're looking to do is just formulate the committee, reactivate, as the chief said, and get this ball rolling again. So we can present, that goal is for, you know, the town meeting in 2024, so we can present a good thorough plan from the townspeople to the townspeople, you know, hey, can we move forward with this and build something? Um, that's going to meet the towns' needs, and honestly, the needs of the community. So a lot's changed in 10 years.
I'd like to think if, if with your approval, we go forward with this committee, that we'll, you know, we'll have something at the, something in the way of a report at the 2023 town meeting. If we get started now. One of the other things I wanted to mention was, of course, funding is going to be huge. One of the positive effects that's taking place is the assistance to firefighters' grants, which we've been successful with in the past, are beginning to look at facilities' needs. In the past, they didn't fund those because honestly, they'd go broke. Uh, but they are looking at that now, so that's, that's positive. And I think that's one of the things that the committee would have to look at. Not just, you know, solely based on our limited tax dollars. We, we would have to seek outside funding. So I think it would be important that that be one of the charges for that committee as well.
It, it sounds, and reading this, it sounds like the, the focus of that committee is, is limited in scope to looking at a replacement facility for the fire department. Have you considered, or in past years, have we considered, uh, a broader, uh, public safety building? Or, or even, you know, public safety plus community build, like have we? Not, not that you want to make a project too big, but sometimes if you can expand the scope of a project, you add cost, but you add enough disproportionate value, you know, you get a one plus one equals three kind of situation.
Yeah. So that, that was a public safety complex that, that got defeated two years in a row. Alex, do you want to speak?
So your thoughts are to constrain it to fire, to, because you think that can get through easier, or?
Honestly, I think it would have back then. I, I don't know. I wouldn't dare guess today, but I think if it had been a standalone fire facility, it, I mean, only lost by 10 votes, two years in a row, 10 or 12 votes.
Wasn't it reconsidered at the same meeting? Just, yeah.
I don't know. I don't remember that far.
Yeah.
I think if they establish a committee, it would be something they would look at, is if cost effective, if it would be more cost effective to have a public safety building than it is individual departments. But I think that would be part of the decision of the committee.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't be opposed to that.
And, and just continuing to push on that issue a little, I, I have heard a trend of going that one step further and not just thinking of it in terms of public safety, but, but community as well. We, we lack for any community facility in this town. We don't have a, there's no public swimming pool in this town. There is no, uh, youth facility gymnasium. There's no adult Parks and Rec facility gymnasium or, or weight room, or, or any of these sort of things that would both benefit the community and benefit a public safety building. You know, you start to bring those facilities together. You have a, you know, public meeting rooms, pub, you know, any of those sorts of things. Again, it doesn't expand the scope, but I, if you were going to go down this road, I would encourage you to, to maybe expand, you know, to consider the, all three of those kinds of options in the assessment phase to say, this is what a fire safety building would be. This is what a public safety building would be. This is what a commu, you know, and, and I know that, that's a harder challenge, but.
That's a lot of scope.
Yeah.
But I can't disagree that it, it's needed in the community. One of the challenges would be, you know, adequate-sized property. I mean, we were looking at that now just for the firehouse.
Right.
You know, we, we sit on one acre, which isn't ideal, but it could work there.
Yeah. Although that challenges, then you, to reuse the exact footprint you're on would require you to tear the building down.
Right.
There. It's not like you have enough space where you could build a new building next to your current building and then.
Yeah, we could, we could stay in the, in the house house while the apparatus bay was being torn down and rebuilt, and perhaps it was, you know, two stories, and that's where the administration and other things were. I mean, that, that's an option. We, we looked at that before.
And where would you park your apparatus during that time?
Well, that's a good, challenging question. Yeah.
That's something that hopefully the committee could find a solution to.
Yeah.
You know, I, my concern, like I said, when I approached the chief and we're sitting here with you guys is the, the three and a half million dollars of equipment that's exposed and not protected at all. If we lose any of that equipment, we're done with the fire department until further needs. Our personnel, everything. So obviously, as fire chiefs, we're, we can only focus on the fire department. The committee is a little more broader. You know, if that's a responsibility we could take on with the police chief, looking towards, you know, a public safety complex, that's absolutely appropriate. I would caution with bringing in the more public aspects of it, you know, we're required to keep maintaining a security level to protect that equipment and so on and so forth, confidentiality, et cetera. But.
A lot of that's true when you combine the two spaces anyway, because.
Yep.
You both have to have space for the public to come in and.
Yep.
I think the challenge that we ran into before was, you know, we, we need to be in town. The police department, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, they're on the road for the most part. They don't need to be in town, let's say.
That's true.
90% of our call volume is in the town hub.
Admittedly, I think 90% of, of chief's call volume is in the downtown area as well.
They're designed to work out of the cruiser versus.
They are, yeah.
We're, we're not.
Although, you know, maybe, maybe if they had a facility in the downtown, they could have one less cruiser and, you know, not, not that we've ever done this before, but, you know, you could have a, if you were that close, you could have a beat cop that, that walked the streets of, of Plymouth at night, or, you know, you start thinking about cost savings in long term. None of that works when you're, when you're five miles out.
Yeah, it's, again, a lot of challenges that the committee would hopefully be able to tackle, and by having a member of the board there on that committee would help us, you know, some of this middle stuff right now, we could hopefully isolate for all parties involved.
Yeah. Timing-wise, it's tough, right? We, you've seen, you've seen some of these CIP numbers, too.
Yes, the problem I have, it's either this, or we spent since 2011 over half a million dollars on this building. We're at another point now where we need to sink in another half a million to redo the roof that was redone in 2011, to redo the walls that are rotted out. It's, do we keep pouring in a half a million dollars every 10 years to a building that should have been replaced over 30 years ago? Uh, so I'm just, I'm asking you guys for the guidance and.
Right.
We gotta do.
Part of that, so we, we don't know what the replacement cost of the building is either.
Exactly.
Half, half a million dollars to get 10 years. If it's $5 million to build a new facility, you know, that's a.
A 50-year building, that's, you know.
It's similar in times of, in terms of direct investment cost, but it's, uh, it's tricky.
I've had this conversation over the years a, a number of times, as some of you know, and, and requested funds for some seed money to do something like, this Needs Assessment Committee probably won't have a lot of cost to it.
Right.
But we've, that's always been the first place that gets cut. The capital reserve, I think we have $25 in the Fire Station Building Replacement Fund.
So you can't replace the fire station for $25?
Unless, unless we get a benefactor. And that's another option. We, for real. There are some individuals that would want to help.
So as, if the board was approved, something like this, and it went to town meeting, um, you have a significant list of equipment here. Would you consider moving some of this equipment out a year or two if you were able to get a building?
The equipment in our capital reserve?
In your CIP.
In the CIP?
Well, I think this all.
I think we would have to look at that. But yeah, it's definitely a possibility.
They're trying to put priorities on equipment and buildings and people and.
Right.
So if, are you ask, is the board willing to set up a committee?
Committee to research this, this challenge?
This challenge.
That's all we're really.
That's all they need to know right now.
There's so many steps to go to, Tommy.
Oh, I, I, yes, I think that personally, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. I'm taking you back and off a meeting that we had several weeks ago, um, where you guys said we needed a needs assessment bad and. Versus the problems that we just found recently. The, my captain and I, in evaluating the building and calling for help, we realized we're in bigger problems, so that's where we're at now.
And we don't need any more surprises like the recycling center where the wall of the building is falling over, right?
So do you want us to proceed with a, a public safety building option, i.e. fire and police? And work with Kathy on committee members?
Maybe you should determine that need first, because I, I kind of perceive that you're pretty happy where you're at.
I mean, it's an old building. It's not really suitable, but I think what it is, is the committee should be formed, and then they could look at all the options. I think that's really what it.
Yeah, we're just trying to get the ball rolling.
Yep.
So who, do you have suggestions of individuals who would be on this committee besides the fire? Both of you, I'm sure, want to be on it.
I remember Mary Crowley was on the last one, but it's not going to happen now.
We, we talked about a contractor such as Reese, who was on it before. Um, I think that's important.
There was another contractor as well.
The dad was on, I forget his name.
Road guy, or plowing and stuff, or. Someone, a road person, who, um.
Dean Yetton was on it. Mark Halloran, I think.
Yeah.
Dean Yetton.
Reese.
Mark Halloran.
Mark would be good, yeah.
Yeah.
He's got time on his hands.
A member of the board, interested?
I'm kind of interested.
I'm interested as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Who of you?
Well.
Want to create this committee, though?
I think there should be a, a public member.
We have, we have a, someone raising his hand back there.
Resident alert.
Oh. Frank.
Except Frank.
Frank, Frank, did you?
Well, I, I would like to be a member, but I think we have other people that would have an interest as a citizen and, um, who might have experience and exposure to this process.
It was. So were you off, were you volunteering yourself, or were you?
I'm volunteering myself.
Okay.
I'm also volunteering myself.
Could you, could, oh, could you just hit the microphone for me?
Hi, I'm Frank Inkle. Uh, we live at 8 Pleasant Street. I've been 32 years in law enforcement, and a good portion of that was cross-trained with the, the fire department. So I'm doubly certified. And I was in the administration and an ex-chief here in New Hampshire. I'd love to be on that committee.
You guys got him on your department yet?
Pardon me?
Did they put you on the department yet?
No, I'm getting a little too old for that.
Building inspector, ad hoc member, Scott Weeden. Can we count you in as an ad hoc member?
I volunteered.
Consultant.
Yeah.
I think that would be important, actually.
Scott would be great, yeah. Um, I know.
I mean, it's, as you know, you don't want it too.
You don't want it too big.
cumbersome, but not everybody's going to show up every time and.
Right. If you have some people who can do legwork and do research and come back, you know, more people can make it less burdensome.
Do you think of anybody else in the next, near future?
Do you want to meet again, have them on the agenda again at the next meeting, and at that point, you'll have yes or no's from these individuals as well?
Yeah, maybe come back and tell us what you've put together for a committee, um, in, in two weeks when we meet again?
Okay.
So right now, we have Mr. Inkle?
Yes.
We probably, I mean, we've had a little conversation here. We probably need a motion and a vote from the board to authorize you all to go start that committee?
Or at least to come back and present the names to the committee?
And present, yeah. A, a name for a committee and charge.
Just do a consensus, and at the next meeting, you can appoint those committee members.
Consensus of the board?
Thumbs up.
Want a motion?
No, I was just looking for consensus. I was looking for a nod.
I'll give you my thumbs up.
Thanks, Ted.
Awesome, thank you.
So I'll send you the names that I have listed here, and then you guys can contact them. Is that all right?
Yeah.
And then, once this is televised, others will come forward, too.
Yeah, they may, they may.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There's a lot of challenges with that project. I, I think site is going to be one of the biggest. Whether that decision point of doing it on the existing footprint of where you are, or, or finding a new location, that's a, that's a big thing.
We're going to start somewhere. This is good. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, that is, oh, not it for new business. Uh, Nick Coats, Grafton County Grant.
He's online.
He's on, oh, there we are, right there on Zoom, ready to go. Hi, Nick.
Hey, how's it going, guys?
Hey, Nick.
Can you guys hear me okay?
We do, yeah.
All right, awesome. Um, I don't really have a formal presentation. I guess it's more of a, um, willingness to answer any questions that you might have. I'll just tell you a couple of quick things. I, I'm a selectman in another town, so I appreciate that you guys are working pretty late at night, and I'm going to do my best to make sure you guys get home earlier than, uh, we usually do at Camden. The short of it is this, is that the, uh, Grafton County Broadband Committee was set up about two years ago to look at how to, uh, bring better broadband access to the Grafton County. Um, and what we ended up doing is bringing on a consulting team from EX Square Technology and, uh, from Nor, uh, NCIC, um, to develop designs and to go out and find the funding to develop, to do the design work and to, uh, find funding to construct a project. Uh, we applied for a NTIA grant last year. We applied for a NTIA grant last year, and I won't give you the alphabet soup because I can't remember all the letters, but essentially, it's broadband funding from the federal government. We applied last year, and we had a very strong application. Unfortunately, we didn't receive funding. We had a debrief from NTIA, and they said that your project is very fundable. You have a strong project. We received billions upon billions of dollars in requests, and we simply ran out of money. And they encouraged us to apply again for this new program that's, has a deadline of about two weeks from now. So let me just take a step back, which is, there's two pieces of the project. There's what's called the middle mile and what's called the last mile. And for the most basic explanation, the middle mile is kind of like the grand trunk, your highways. You know, the roads connecting the towns are like your state highways. And your last mile is essentially your, your roads that connect to your homes and actually going into the homes. So we used, the county used ARPA funds that were made available to it to come up with high-level designs for the middle mile and last mile, and now have actually moved into final design for the middle mile project and final design for last mile of all the towns, all thirty-nine municipalities. All of that money that came from, is from ARPA, so there's been no cost to the county taxpayer at this point. The committee is of five members, of town administrators, town managers throughout the county, and I think we've probably put close to a thousand hours or more in, in this project, all on volunteer basis at this point. So what we are finishing up is the middle mile design, and we are applying for the NTIA funding to build out that, that middle mile project. We heard from a lot of towns that they didn't have the know-how or the technical expertise to construct the last miles in their town. And so what we decided to do was to use those ARPA funds to, to come up with designs for last mile, and then turn that over to each of the towns, and then the towns could utilize that however they wish. So it could be anything from working with an internet service provider to try to attract new service into the, into their town. It could be utilizing it to work with existing providers or new upcoming providers to identify priorities in their towns. And those doc designs are the proverbial shovel-ready. And so every town would get those designs when they're complete at the last mile level over the next couple of months. So we'll make sure we send those out. The middle mile work, final design for that, is finishing up here in the next month or so. We had, we sent out our engineering team to each of the town offices around the county to take a survey of space capabilities, where you could essentially put a server rack for that. And that server rack is basically the, the jumping-off point for construction out to the different town, parts of town. So, you know, our, our overarching goal has been to, one, to, to make sure that every town is, has a design and make sure every town is part of the design process and has a design, and that anything in construction goes to every single town in the county, all thirty-nine towns. That we are providing a level of technical expertise and help to the communities to help make good decisions on a design perspective, and then also making our grant writer available to them to help. And really, you know, in terms of what we're trying to accomplish, we're trying to bring a level of additional competition to the marketplace, because right now, there's very few providers, and they control the market, and there's not a sort of check and balance in, in the cost. I can just tell you, we did, we did a project like this in Bristol, and what we noticed is that the incumbent provider was essentially, I hate to say put on notice, but they started providing better service. Costs were, were becoming better, and they were becoming more competitive, all while bringing in another provider to give people options. And it's a fiber-based system, so it's, it's the, the technology of the now and future, not the technology of the past, which is copper cable. So we're now in the middle of interviewing internet service providers as well, as we prepare to put our application into the NTIA. And we're interviewing internet service providers to see which partners, internet service providers would be interested in delivering service. So again, our goal is to build the middle mile, which then allows for those internet service providers to, to have a better return on investment, and to then make that return investment make a lot more sense, to be able to invest in towns, smaller towns that they maybe normally wouldn't have. We saw that again in the Bristol example. We're seeing that in Haverhill. Now they're doing a project. Hebron is working on a project as well. So, you know, that's what we're up to as committee and, and happy to take any questions. I tried to keep it pretty basic for you. Hopefully, didn't get too technical for you.
Well, I got a question, Nick, for the fact that I was more concerned about what Grafton County is as far as either a collaborator or a competitor of the Electric Cooperative and their build-out. And it just seemed like the Electric Cooperative is gonna target a place at the end of, like, Fairgrounds Road or whatever, for their middle mile, not middle mile, but, and you were gonna target, the, the Grafton County thing is, is at the town hall. And I'm looking at the Electric Cooperative thing, it was dated September seventh, and they will serve thirty-six Grafton County municipalities with last mile internet services, and it looks like extension of Electric Cooperative's Grafton County Fiber Network to provide points of presence at the town halls, which, you know, seems to differ from where initially they were gonna target. It seems to be, you know, you know, in, in, you know, hand in glove with yours, at least to Grafton County. So I'm wondering, how is this comp, it's not a, is it a competition or what, or how can we incorporate both?
No, I don't think it's a competition. I think we're trying to solve the problem, and so are they.
Yeah.
So the way I look at it is, Grafton County, as a whole, wins when multiple people are trying to solve the problem. And then ultimately, you know, we're going through a process right now, the, the committee, the county committee is going through a process right now, interviewing providers, and we're having conversations about, okay, you know, does the design that has been developed by the county, is it conducive to what you, internet service provider X, Y, or Z, would want to do with a community or, or region? You know, if, if there's ways in which we can be flexible and working through that to come up with something where we're gonna not duplicate efforts, we're definitely having that conversation. You know, there are towns that, there's a footprint of a certain, certain providers that is, is a lot, and other towns where the footprint of providers or potential providers is a little. And we just felt that it would be best to kind of have a plan that all towns and all areas of towns had the opportunity, so that we're not recreating the problem that exists currently. And so, you know, we, we understand that we're not gonna, everything's not gonna be built on on day one, and that, you know, it, there's gonna be decisions that are made on particular areas based on where companies can make money fastest to, to support what they're doing. You know, in our, in our effort, in our interviews, we're, we've been talking to a couple of different companies, and, you know, one has said, hey, look, we're really interested in this part of the county. We'd love to do these seven or eight towns, but we, we're not interested in doing the rest, and, and that's great. There are others who are looking at this and saying, we'd love to be part of the entire county effort, and there are some that are sort of in between. So, you know, I, I think the county wins when more people are interested in solving the problem. And ultimately, you know, whatever partner or partners we choose, we're gonna look at, at how to make sure that it, it works best so that we were very competitive with any grant funds and other funds that are available.
Could I ask a further question? Because so, basically, we, we would win regardless. In fact, we had the, the co-op indicate that within eighteen months, Kathy's raising her hand, but.
We, we have Leo Dwyer here from the co-op to talk.
Oh, okay. Well, you indicated that we, every customer of the co-op would have fiber within eighteen months. This is the last time we were actually provided a, a project update by the Electric Cooperative, who are here tonight as well. But if that's the case, I think that, you know, we're, we're basically looking at last mile costs, because either project would provide deadhead and the town hall, apparently.
Well, to be clear, one of the project had, one of the two projects has a plan on last mile.
Yep.
And they've got a concept around last mile.
No, we haven't. Grafton County has, actually, they, they have a plan for last mile as well.
Well, do, I thought they had a plan, I thought they had a plan that was, this is how we would build it, but we need to find someone who actually will build. They're not talking about building last mile.
They provide like a map of, of last mile.
But a map is not an implementation, it's a concept.
It's final engineering, so that it's, it would be shovel-ready to fund and build however people want it built.
But there's a difference between, there's a difference in a shovel-ready project and someone actually having a shovel.
What they shouldn't, shouldn't do.
But, but the difference between what you're saying is being shovel-ready and what NHHC is saying is they've got shovels in hand and they're about to deliver the service, like that, that's a huge difference. That's not just a, a small on-paper difference.
There was another difference, too, regarding the actual, like, who owns the, the poles. And Electric Cooperative can string fiber because they own it, versus having to pay, you know, a provider, you know, cost for hanging a wire.
Well, not totally. So they, any effort that the co-op puts it, puts together is going to have to play by the same rules that any other internet service provider would under, if they're gonna be on a pole that was owned by Eversource or CCI or what have you. Now, they, they likely are not gonna be going there on day one, in terms of those other poles. They'll probably speak to that better than I could, but I, they would, just like any other internet service provider, they would have to get the poll applications in and, and prepare them and pay the cost to be on those poles.
I, I would think they would be able to negotiate a pretty good cost with themselves, though.
No, you can't. It's, it's a state, state law, and it's by, it's by the provider. So, I mean, whatever their poles are, are their poles. They would be obviously charged to themselves, but.
We, we have little presence of, like, Eversource. The majority of Plymouth is, is.
Hundred percent, I believe.
Not a hundred percent. Maybe like a point five percent is Eversource. Because we had to pay an agreement when they negotiated the string, string costs or.
So let, let me pause Nick in this line of conversation a little and just get a little bit of context from NHHCs, so that we're.
Closer to the mic, perhaps, too.
Yeah, or we'll, we'll miss out, but.
I, I think we spoke over Zoom a few.
Yeah, a few months, a month ago, maybe?
And since that time, we've hired a new CEO who joined us a week ago, which is Alyssa.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Alyssa Clemson-Robinson. So I thought I'd bring her along to, to meet some of the natives.
Now, Alyssa, are you CEO of the Electric Co-op or of specifically New Hampshire Broadband?
The whole thing.
The whole thing, okay, thank you.
And Alyssa has extensive spirit, experience in building broadband in cooperatives around the country, which I, I'm sure she could tell you about, but I don't think that's why we're here tonight. Basically, we're on track where we said we would be last time we spoke. We've broken ground, cleared the site at Fairgrounds, and you've seen engineers, I think, around town, and we've started doing make-ready. And we're on track to build through Grafton County about nine hundred miles. And we had a very good conversation with Nick earlier today, where I think there is an opportunity for us to coordinate our efforts, where we can help deliver what he wants. And I hope we're able to, to come to that arrangement.
Does, does the middle mile work that they're doing provide the additional capacity for you folks, or it's really unrelated?
We're effectively building that middle mile as part of our project. It.
And there's no benefit to either redundancy or failover or any of that?
No, no, no.
Okay.
In fact, what we're building would, I think Nick's middle mile project is three hundred and thirty miles, give or take. And we would get to every one of the points with an additional fifty miles on what we're building. So it gives you an idea of the extent of what we're building.
So a lot of overlap between the two projects.
Right, and it's stupid to overlap, because.
Well, what I fear as a, as a taxpayer to the, the community is that you're gonna build the two things. You all are gonna get there first. Your middle mile gets lit up, all of those, you know, last mile gets lit up, and then what, what they build out ends up being a little bit dark.
Right. I, I could understand competing if we were a for-profit, because then I think you run the risk that someone, and we've said, whoever takes this government money and builds fiber in the remote areas is going to have a forty-year monopoly or fifty-year monopoly, because nobody's gonna have money like this to overbuild it again. And so, given that, we think it's really important that it be a nonprofit, and I think that's.
Is New Hampshire Broadband, because I noticed here, you, you listed NH Broadband LLC. Is New Hampshire Broadband going to be a nonprofit, or is it a, a for-profit entity of the nonprofit broader org?
I, I'm, I'm not sure of the legal structure, but it's a hundred percent owned by the nonprofit. So the, the, the stream, even if it makes a profit, goes into the nonprofit, so it's a.
Okay.
And the intent is not to make money. The intent is to serve our members and those others that we can. I don't know if Alyssa wants to add anything.
I would just agree with that, and I would say that, you know, nine hundred and eighty rural electric cooperatives exist across the country, and they're about a hundred to two hundred right now, either having built, building, or in the process of getting ready to build. And none of them that I am aware of, and I have worked with many of these cooperatives, having been involved in this movement for now almost fifteen years, are building to make money. They're building because they're finding a brain drain in their communities. They're building because their schools lack adequate service. They're building because this is a necessary utility, much like energy and water today. So I would say that it is our goal not to provide expensive service, it's to provide affordable, reliable, true broadband internet to all of our electric members, and perhaps even beyond.
Yeah. And just, you've said it, you've said it to this meeting, I think, two different times. I'll ask you again. What is the timeline in terms of Plymouth and, and the first subscribers coming online?
In the, in the graft and build, Plymouth is first, because we're building north out of Plymouth, and I would think Q1 next year.
Okay, so that has slipped a little from what you were more, projects always move, I, I understand.
There is a, a grant program that we applied for, and thank you guys very much. You gave us a letter of support for the, there was a fifty-million-dollar grant that's still pending with the BEA, and they actually stipulated that we couldn't ask for anything, any funding for anything we built before we submitted the application. So we actually, which was kind of, anyway. So we, we held back a couple of weeks at that point, so explains a little bit of the slippage, but.
So you're going forward regardless? You're going forward.
Regardless of the grant, yes.
Yep. And so, is there any synergy with the Grafton County thing, or?
I think it, it, we should be cooperating to seek the grant money, because it doesn't make sense to duplicate those efforts.
Nick, is that a possibility with the, the county?
Yeah, we, as Leo said, we had a really good conversation today. So, you know, I think I, apologies for, for NHHC hearing this twice, but that was one of the things that we talked about today specifically around, okay, you know, here are the things that are really important to the county, and really the, you know, top line is really, we said that, look, if any public money's gonna be involved, we want to make sure that all communities are served. Because that, otherwise, you know, we're, we're essentially kind of creating the problem all over again. And I think there was some good agreement on that and what that actually looks like. That's going to be our next conversation over the next couple of days, week or so.
It's got to be fast because the next grant's in the end of the month, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
And if I could just add one thing, it's, I think we can definitely respect what the county is trying to do in terms of meeting all of the, you know, fiber needs to get an opportunity. I think we are very much aligned in what that looks like because we want to provide broadband, you know, not just to the communities, but to the folks that are in between, you know, the towns and communities within our service territory. So I think we would be very much interested in providing that extra fifty miles to help provide that opportunity. And we said we'd be willing to discuss what it would look like to be a last mile provider. You know, what would be beneficial to New Hampshire Electric Cooperative members, of course, right? Because that's who owns us, as well as what's beneficial to the county and the communities that are there. And it may look like, you know, a variety of ways to provide the last mile service, which is what I believe Grafton County is also saying right now, that they're looking for a variety of ways to provide service as well, last mile.
Agreed.
Good.
Well, this is great.
And, and I should let you know that I live in Sandwich and we're turning the light on, on the twenty-second.
Okay. Well, yeah, great for Sandwich. Okay.
Well, I live in Plymouth, so we're excited to be turning the lights on in Plymouth, too.
Well, you got me sold.
My parents are in Lemster and I own property there, so I'm already.
Oh, they have custo?
Yes, they were.
They like it?
Very much so, yeah. My, my father was on the board there while you were all doing the initial build-out.
Oh, of course. Yeah. I've spoken to him.
Yes.
Well, I've spoken to his son.
Two generations.
Gluttons for punishment.
That's probably true, too, yeah. Any other questions for NHCC or Grafton County?
I'm pleased.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for inviting us.
Always happy to have you here. We're excited about your projects.
As much as our, our, our membership rates, can you do anything about that?
We are always talking about how to keep rates low.
Excellent. See ya.
Joe, let's talk about Bell Road.
It's not over yet?
So you want an update on Bell Road?
Yes, please.
What we're doing here?
What's the update?
On Bell Road, right? That's what we're talking about?
Yes, please. Yes.
So I got a, my signs all come in today, five hundred dollars worth of signs just for that project. And so we'll see what the rain, if it doesn't rain too bad, we'll get them out tomorrow. If not, we'll try to get them out by the end of the week. And I had scheduled to put some material on the hill today, but we're short on help. So, because we paved outlet road, so we're also going to try to get some material out there. And I'm meeting tomorrow with a contractor for paving. So I don't have an update price-wise, but I'm meeting with him tomorrow, so I'll have one for you for the next board meeting. That's what I got.
Looks like it's going to rain tomorrow.
Yep. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your continued efforts there. Neil, removal of trash receptacles on Main Street.
Before Neil speaks, I just wanted to let the board that I have, Jim Korn is also on, listening to the meeting and with an interest.
Oh, great.
For these. And I believe that you have an email in front of you from Danny Downing regarding the same issue.
I, I would like to make. Okay. Does Jim want to speak for?
Jim, Jim, did you want to speak or?
No, I'm just listening. I've been listening all night.
Glad, glad you're here. So Neil's going to speak to this.
Are you reflecting on Jim's presentation at the last meeting? And having spoken with some citizens, I'd like to propose that we have a trial period of removal of the municipal trash receptacles on Main Street to see if it, if it'll, if it's acceptable.
This season, this season or?
I, you know, I thought maybe the board could, you know, reflect, you know, reflect on, on what kind of a time period would be good.
So I, I am, you know, kind of sold on the fact that removal is, would be a good idea, even though initially I wasn't because I'm, I'm still concerned about what trash might be thrown on the ground or, you know, outside stores and such. But maybe dealing with the receptacles themselves kind of is worse than the problem that we would think that people throwing stuff on the, on the ground. But I also wouldn't.
May I?
Go ahead, Jim.
No, may I say something?
Yes.
About if there is no trash receptacles on Main Street, there'll be no trash on Main Street.
Yeah, I, I think that's kind of wishful thinking, but, you know, there, there may be less trash on Main Street. But I still think there's going to be something being tossed around.
Definitely.
I mean, it, it shouldn't be because everybody that uses that trash receptacles are grown adults. I don't throw trash out in my front yard and I believe nobody else on the board does that. And when I go out to eat, if I eat in a park or something, I don't, I take my trash with me to go home. I don't go to somebody else's park or recreation place and say, oh, I'm going to have a pizza and just leave my trash in the receptacles. I take it with me. I don't think that it should be anybody's responsibility in the town of Plymouth or wherever you work to pick up somebody else's trash. I think if you take them off Main Street, you will have no trash on Main Street. That's just my thought. I may be wrong. And we can do it. We'll see how it goes next year. And if it becomes a problem, then I'll eat my words and have to go put trash cans back out there. But I don't believe it should be anybody's responsibility to pick up trash on Main Street.
I'm not sold on the idea, but I like Neil's idea of a trial period. This clearly would not be the time, in my opinion. It would be spring, throughout the summer, winter, season, and people more likely to be out. I'd love to see it come to fruition that, if we don't, we won't have trash. I'm not sold on it, but I'm not against it either. I'd, I'd love to see some proof of it.
If there's less foot traffic this time of year, why wouldn't this be a good time to trial it?
Because I don't think it's, it, it's more, it's more obvious during the warmer months. People are out more. You see the trash overflow. So would we not see that overflow or would we not see a trash problem if those cans were taken away during the warmer, busier months? People aren't out as much, you know, they're not eating in the park.
If you don't think it would be a problem right now.
Then we should just.
Then we should just remove them right now.
Right, but I just don't think it's a fair, so remove them now, which is fine.
But not make the decision, official decision until we've had enough time.
That's, sure. That's not a problem either. Sure. I'm okay with that.
But I, I agree with you that it, I, I don't think we could say, remove the trash cans right now and in thirty days come back and say, hey, there was no problem. We'll never need trash cans again. Because I think that you're right, that the summer months are probably the highest trash volume time.
Right.
So Mary Ann, you, you think it would be okay to remove them now? And if we have a problem, bring them back?
Yes, but our assessment right now, yeah, I don't have a problem with leaving them or not using them as long as we come back and do an assessment. I'm not sure. It's almost sort of August of next year.
Yeah.
Or maybe even less than that.
I'd say try it for a, one year.
I mean.
Try it for one year.
You know.
I mean, we still have mattresses that get dumped.
Try it for what?
Try it for a year.
Try it for a year.
Yep.
But we still get mattresses that are dumped.
Well, that's, that's a different issue.
And also, yeah.
But it's trash, I guess is my point.
It is like a disrespect of your environment. I, I agree. But I think.
May I speak?
A motion on a one-year trial makes sense to me. Yeah, Jim, why don't you speak?
I get there's mattresses and stuff dumped throughout the town. I get that. But this is Main Street. People are using them receptacles as their own trash can. You know, nobody's going to leave a mattress on Main Street because they'll get caught. But they're cleaning out their cars with their bags and they're just, and they tip them over. The college, two weeks ago, tipped everyone over on Main Street and my guys had to pick them up with the flowers. They had to scoop up the dirt, put the flowers back on top. Now, I, why is that our responsibility to pick that stuff up? You know, why is it the recycling center's responsibility to pick up Main Street trash from the businesses? Because they go eat at the parks and all that. Why is that our responsibility? And they make a mess and the college kids tip them over. So if I had to go out and pick them up every Sunday morning when the college kids, kids tip them over, no. Shame on the college, Plymouth State for raising kids like that, for us to pick their trash up.
Yeah.
And they make mess.
Well, we don't really know if it was a Plymouth State college kids and, and we shouldn't blame them just because.
Well, I'm assuming because it happens every year, move-in, then it happens in spring clean.
Yeah, but we have plenty of trash during the summer as well when they're not, when they're not around. I, I would agree. I don't want to make a blanket statement.
So if we choose to remove them, though, for, for a year trial or whatever, I think we better hit the downtown businesses first to let them know, you know, what we're contemplating or what we.
Yeah, I, I put out a note to them. I don't know, maybe I got ten responses.
Okay.
One was not from a business owner who, who said basically the businesses are required. The other responses are a lot from self-Main Street and they actually wanted to see trash cans out there.
Okay.
The businesses looking for.
We need to be careful who we ask, who we ask.
And we did get this one email who, that was, that was supportive of their move.
Yeah, I should have printed out the emails I got, but I didn't think to.
Do you need a motion?
Sure.
I, I move that we remove the trash receptacles on Main Street that are maintained by the, the town for one year.
From?
On a trial basis.
From what day forward or?
From now.
Can we add an evaluation date every two months or something?
Yeah, I think we should do a short-term evaluation date and then a, a longer, because if.
Okay, I'll agree to that.
If in one month it's an absolute chaos downtown, like we, we, we should back off.
Okay.
Are, are you including the ones inside the common? Is that where, is that included in that?
That would be, yes.
I don't think that's a good idea at all. I've been picking up trash in this town for fifteen years, working through Park and Rec. And receptacle or not, those kids buy stuff at a store and they just take it across the road and throw it on the ground. And we've picked it up and disposed of all kinds of stuff. I just think if you take them out of the park, you're going to find it all over the inside of that park. The Main Street ones I can't speak to because it's not, we've never really dealt with them. But the ones in the common, you, if you take those out, it'll be a mess. Nobody's going to bring it back in the car. And a lot of, the reason why it's on the ground is it doesn't, they fill them and then the animals take and pull them all out. And we pick that up just about every day. But I remember Plymouth House of Pizza, they had a trash receptacle. They'd buy pizza, walk across the road and throw the trash on Plymouth Inn. So then we pick it up. Same, I mean, it's, it's worked at Fox Park, but not, we still pick up diapers. We still got cans. We still pick up people's furniture. And, you know, it's, Main Street maybe, Fox, the common, I think you, you're going to find you're going to have a mess. And that's just not including the stuff that ends up in the street that Joe can attest to that they pick up.
I think, I think one of the things you said, though, is, is legit that some of the trash that we see in that space comes from the overflow of the receptacles.
Absolutely.
And so that.
Animals pull it out. It's, you know.
Yeah. It's not just people in that case. It's, it's animals and this vermin and.
I don't know if adding another one to offset the two, but then do you want three receptacles in your common when you, you know?
Yeah. I, I like the idea of testing a hypothesis of carry-in, carry-out as long as we're also willing to reverse that decision if it's a mess.
So I, I agree with adding that to my motion.
To leave the receptacles in the common or just?
Review, review, to take the receptacles off Main Street and then review after a month or two months to see whether it's effective or not.
So the common will, will still have the receptacles or?
No.
Okay. I was just wondering if you're amending the motion.
Well, it seems to be a problem whether you have them or not, I, I guess.
Okay. Did I second that?
You did not, though.
I second it.
Any other discussion?
I have just a, a thought. I did go to another town recently and they have signs that indicate littering, carrying in and out only, consumption of alcohol, excessive noise. These are items that are prohibited in that area. We don't have any signs that indicate that. So we'd like to look into purchasing maybe a few signs at each entrance.
I think the idea of putting some carry-in, carry-out signs on, on the common makes a lot of sense. I don't think we give it a fair shake if we don't put up the signage.
What towns you look at or?
Holdeness.
Okay.
Their park that is behind the post office has this sign.
All right.
And I, as Jim said, there are signs in other towns as well in their parks that we may be able to get information from, if we need it.
And Robert, please let us know if you're seeing an absolute nightmare on the common. We'll, we'll want that feedback. This is not a, this is definitely not a situation where, where we're all like, this is absolutely a hundred percent going to work. We, we need to see what the behavior is going to be.
You'll never know until you try, but I just know if it, we go down and check it and we'll see.
Yeah, we'll see.
I do, I can say that in the fifteen years that I've been here that this is the time of year where you see the most trash. I mean, all summer long, we might not pick up a piece of trash at Plymouth Inn or, you know, and then this time of year, it doubles immediately.
And you mean, you, you don't mean track, you mean litter. This is the time of year with the most litter.
Bottles, cans, paper plates. At the time, the pizza place was giving slices of pizza. They'd eat the pizza across the road and throw it on the ground. So we've picked up thousands and tons of trash.
Made me think I, one of the landlords recently asked me, and I, I don't think we have the authority for this. And I'm not even sure he was serious, but was suggesting that it would, they would really enjoy if there was some way we could ban bottles in the town of Plymouth. Because cans, they're a mess. Bottles are chaos. The injuries from the throwing the bottles, the glass in the streets, the cleanup. Again, I don't know if we have the authority, but.
Yeah.
Well, the enforcement would start with none of the stores in town. Well, the enforcement would start with none of the stores in town being able to sell them. I, but I think, I don't know if we have any authority there, but it was an interesting idea of, anything that would reduce glass in this town would be really, really nice.
That's kinda like eliminating trash barrels on Main Street.
What was that?
What, what was that?
Well, you guys talking about bottles, you know. It's just a mess. It's an actual, actual mess. And as far as Park and Rec, I don't know how much you guys pick up on weekends or Monday. Rob, are you still there?
We only, we, we do the common on Mondays, we don't work Saturdays and Sundays.
He said they just do, they do the common on Monday, I'm not sure if you could hear.
Monday and Friday, when we, we do Monday morning and then Friday when we mow. And then.
Yeah, do you, are, are the common trash cans Park and Rec or the recycling centers?
They've been the recycling center since I worked here and, and before I worked here.
I think Jim may have missed.
Okay.
I think he did too.
No.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna call the vote on the motion. We got a motion in a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No.
I thought it was Jim, it's Ted.
I'm sure Jim also supports the motion. All right, so, uh, operationally, uh, Jim, do you wanna, should, should he take those receptacles next time he empties them? And.
No, I'm, I'm not gonna do this tomorrow. I was gonna wait till October, well, November the second. It'd be Wednesday when we take them off Main Street. I'm not gonna do it right now.
Okay.
I think we got a motion that, uh.
The motion was to take them off today.
No, well, we can, I can, well, I can't take them off today because they're not there.
It's a little bit late in the evening, but. But you, you, you have been directed to, to remove them at your earliest opportunity.
Wednesday of this week.
Wednesday it is. Uh, and just make sure you store those in case we have to reverse that decision so that we can get them back in place.
I had that plan in place, I will.
Thanks, Jim, really appreciate it.
Thank you, and I appreciate it, and I hope it doesn't become a problem, and if it does, I will address it. And do the, everything I can to make Plymouth good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is the end of new business. Uh, on to committee reports.
I didn't attend the last Plymouth, uh, the Water and Sewer, but as, as I alluded to earlier, Don and I spoke, um, and, uh, especially considering what's gonna happen at, at South Main Street, getting a group together. Uh, I'm not sure who should be part of that group, Curly Chief, um, Steve Temporino maybe, um, don't want to, um, overlap with Park and Committee. I, I think that's where Don's coming from though, but, yeah, he would have a representative in that group as well.
Good. Uh, planning board, I covered for Neil the most recent meeting, uh, which was on September first. Uh, there was a, a slightly odd notice to a butters about a communications tower in Wolfspurrow. I can't believe that we are technically a butters to that, but I guess we are. Uh, other interesting stuff, the, uh, there's a hearing scheduled, as June indicated, is a hearing scheduled for September fifteenth, this Thursday, uh, for the, the site plan review changes that are proposed, uh, which include, um, you know, some, some legal clarification and, and updates for, uh, um, you know, for compatibility around some of the RSAs. Uh, I, I don't think there's admittedly much in there that's, uh, that's particularly controversial. Uh, it's mostly, uh, just cleanliness, but there, there will be a hearing on that. Uh, similarly, there'll be a hearing on the CIP, which I strongly encourage folks to, uh, to attend that one. There is some interesting conversations happening around zoning amendments and, uh, and in particular of, of maybe the, the most, I don't know, interesting conversation around chickens in the residential area. For people who are interested in that. Technically, chickens are not legal in downtown at all today. There is no provision for chickens. So they are entertaining some, uh, some adjustment to the, the zoning that does allow chickens, but not roosters.
Yeah, what?
Right, that's the, that's the problem.
Because roosters are really, those, that's the thing that's, that's leading to calls to the police and, uh, and technically right now, no chickens are allowed, so. I hope, it seemed like the board was pretty supportive of, of kind of expanding that and legalizing chickens in Plymouth.
Yeah, they'll be happy.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I'll be happy. I'm, I'm apparently buying eggs on the black market. Uh, lots of questions about Riverside Landing, uh, some stuff around, uh, Midstate Community is up and running now, the, the, uh, childcare. Lakes Region Mental Health, I don't, I don't know if folks have noticed, but they've started that project finally, uh, over on Highland. And then, uh, Midstate's community development location on Main Street is gonna be filing their, uh, the renovation business plan soon, so, so that's coming.
Can I mention something related to that? So I guess, um, Hanover had a request for Dartmouth Hitchcock to put a, or take over a building in downtown, uh, Hanover, and they, um, they banned it, they refused it.
Really?
I don't know how they got the wherewithal to be able to, you know, basically prohibit a non, a not-for-profit to go downtown.
Was it owned by the town?
No.
Appropriate, yeah.
No. Anyway.
Sounds like the sort of thing will be legally challenged, but.
Yeah, but.
Interesting.
Hanover's got all the money to, to defend it though.
Yeah, well, that's one worth to work, to keep an eye on. Uh, and so Planning Board meets again on Thursday. Uh, Campus Community Council.
We have a, a meeting on the books to be the nineteenth of October at five fifteen P M. Uh, I'm sure that, um, our discussion with some land, uh, some homeowners over in the Langdon Pleasant Street area are going to feature prominently at this one. Um, but I'm also working with, um, Marlin to come up with a formal agenda, and we'll send it out to the population that we know.
Uh, Plymouth School District, Ted and I have swapped duties here, uh, because of the timing of his class, uh, and I missed the first high school one because I wasn't able to change my schedule for, quick enough to react to it, but, um, elementary school, did you go to their most recent, Ted?
Um, it was tonight.
Ah, yes, you're right, uh, Phil was running off to that as we were meeting. So no, we haven't talked to the elementary school. Neil, Conservation Commission.
We haven't had a meeting since our last board meeting.
Okay. Capital Improvement, which, so these are switched, I'm Capital Improvement and Ted is ABC, so Capital Improvement is, uh, for lack of a better term, we, we have rested. We, we have delivered our report to, uh, the Planning Board, and as I said, that there'll be a hearing around the, the first plan for that, but that group won't meet again until, uh, probably spring. Advisory Budget Committee, Ted?
Um, they were here tonight, I don't have anything else to add.
Perfect. L R P C?
Um, the Executive Board is gonna be meeting on Wednesday morning. Nothing, that's the first thing since the annual meeting.
Okay. Parks and Rec, Ted?
I did get a, a list of things from Lisa today, yes, I think today. Um, I'll kinda hit the highlights. Um, they had a very successful summer camp this year. Um, they were, they limited some of the, the trips due to extreme costs, um, but. Um, they had a lot of success with parents with transportation. Under su, under summer soccer camps with goals galore, had great numbers. Uh, July and August gave, gave us beautiful Wednesday evenings, were the most summer, uh, popular summer concert series. We only had one of the nine scheduled there, canceled due to weather. Uh, let's see, the fifteen dol, fifteen dollar increase in registration for youth soccer was implemented this year, and it didn't have any significant impact. Let's see, Kelsey returned, excuse me, Kelsey returned in the height of summer camp excitement. Uh, the veterans ceremony and Memorial Day celebration will now be organized by her. Uh, she's also taken responsibility of streamlining park request forms and started planning adult trips. That will make a much anticipated return as well as other recreational opportunities outside after-school and summer camp for a wider range of ages. And finally, Halloween events will happen on Monday, October thirty-first. Trick-or-treating will be from four thirty to five thirty P M for businesses and five thirty, seven thirty P M for residents. Uh, these times are posted on the public website, and the department is contacting businesses directly so they can prepare as needed. Um, the Chief of Police has also approved this date and time.
That's great, lots of good updates coming out of them. Parking Committee.
Uh, so we've had a few different meetings. Uh, the Parking Committee met with, um, Jason from Water and Sewer, we reviewed, um, the spots back. The spots back in, um, across from the senior center, thanks, Alex. Um, they are owned by Water and Sewer. Um, they're obviously very amenable to us using that for parking. Um, we did have a question about insurance, Kathy tracked that down. Um, it, it would just be an agreement between the town and Water and Sewer, who's responsible for what. Um, Joseph was there, he's going to look at the cost of, uh, lighting, um, so then we can, you know, our business is actually interested in permitted parking down there. Um, it wasn't, it wasn't taken advantage of, I don't know, a year, year and a half ago, but now they may be more inclined, considering the costs now, not allowing people to stay there all day, not to mention South Main Street, so they'd be. I think we thought about twenty spaces, give or take, um, so waiting for Joseph, we'll approach the businesses, see if it even makes sense for us to go down that path. Um, maybe we do something else with that, make it more public parking, I'm not sure.
That's a great lead, though.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see how that goes. Um, I was, I was surprised that, uh, Water and Sewer owned that, I didn't realize that, so it's good to know. Alex has been in conversation with P S U regarding Silver Center. Um, no, it was never allowed before. Um, the, um, P S U, uh, P D just didn't monitor those parking spots, those parking lots during the off-season, during summer, when school isn't in session. Um, but Alex has been, more conversation as well.
Yeah, so I spoke with Patty Rice from the Plymouth State University, and, uh, she's willing to meet with the Parking Committee so we can discuss our options and what we're looking at and what they can provide for the town. So, uh, we will set up a parking meeting and invite them, and we can, uh, further discuss what our options are. It's, obviously, would be off, for their off-season, where they don't have students here, but they do have programs during the summer, so it would be something we would have to work out.
You have to coordinate, yeah.
Exactly.
Figure out if there's some sort of signage or something that we can, that we can do in that space.
She's definitely willing to sit down with the Parking Committee, so we'll, uh, we'll schedule another parking meeting.
That's really big for downtown, if, if we can do something, even, you know, even if it relieves some pressure, like.
Absolutely.
Any pressure's good.
The other, just a follow-up for last meeting, Amanda, the Post Master from the Post Office came with concerns about parking for their employees at the Post Office. Um, and, you know, Kathy and Ann had a, a thought. We also meet, we met with the Parking Committee and everyone, the suggestion was to the board is maybe taking the four spots at the top of Court Street that are, right now, um, saved for the Town Hall, but really don't get used during the day.
I had to use it tonight, I just wanna say. Force the family.
Well, here's the thing, so what our suggestion is, during the day, from six in the morning to five at night, have permitted parking for the Post Office, and after five o'clock till midnight would be the use for the Town Hall. Um, and the reason for not parking between midnight and six A M would be so Joe and his workers can, uh, clear it for snow removal. Uh, and our ordinance says you can't park on the streets between midnight and six A M anyway during those times, um, so those would be.
And you're thinking the after-five is because of the, the load we have for meetings like this?
Exactly, yeah.
I'll admit, five o'clock might be slightly late.
Little bit. Um, I'm just trying to think of what time the Post Office closes, and the transition would be quick, but just a thought of maybe just doing what we did on Green Street, is taking some of those spots, turn them into permanent parking at ten cents an hour, it's a, you know, a dollar ten, uh, per day. It's for years, it's, uh, four hundred and one dollars and fifty cents a year per spot. There's four spots technically up there, but we could fit five cars up there. Um, so those five spots during the day could generate two thousand seven dollars and fifty cents worth of revenue for the town, for the parking. Um, and that would be enforced by parking enforcement. Um, we would have to obviously change the signs to reflect that, but that was our suggestion to the board about possibly fixing some of the parking in downtown. The Post Office has obviously gotten busier, they get more deliveries, uh, with Amazon, Amanda said, so trying to pu, uh, put cars in there and then try to move them during the day is just.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. So that was our suggestion to the board.
Good, yeah.
Yeah.
What time do the meters stop?
Uh, so it depends on what day it is. Um, I'd have to look it up.
Monday through Friday, or?
Yeah. Six.
Six.
Yeah. We actually put stickers on all the meters to, so everyone knows, a brand-new meter, um, stickers on the meters for meter times too. That was our, maybe, solution to solve some of the problems of parking on Main Street.
I like it.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah, so it, it won't be a meter, it'll be permit.
No, so it'll be permits, and it would be through our parking office at the P D, just like we do on Green Street.
Right.
Um, you know, there would be five spots, and we would have to coordinate with the Post Office if they want to do like we do for Petermans. We sell spots that are allowable for several different vehicles, but one vehicle at a time for one permit. So let's say, maybe there's one person that works on Tuesdays, they're allowed to park there, and so the permits would specifically have the plate numbers on there, so our parking enforcement officer would know they're authorized to park there. So the permit would go through parking, and the revenue would go through the. Parking. Parking, just like we did for Green Street.
Right. That's great.
Very good.
Do you need a motion, or you're happy with that?
Uh, you know, we would definitely need something from the board that says that that's what you guys wanna do, uh, because right now those spots are allocated for the Town Hall. We would just need the motion to say that during the day of those times that we can change it to permanent parking and sell the permits.
Should I say so moved?
Do we have to say it's for the Post Office?
Well, I mean, if that's what you guys want it specifically for.
Because there's a list of people on the permit list.
True.
So what, I don't, however you guys want it worded, if you just want those permanent spots, we do have a waitlist.
I think we are, the reason we started talking about this was to address a particular safety congestion issue around the, the Post Office. I would think maybe we address the waitlist people with, uh, the Water and Sewer spots that we're talking about.
I just want, with, the motion should include that it's for Post Office. It's permitted parking, but meant for the Post Office employees as opposed to just permanent, permit parking.
Yeah, permit, permit parking for Post Office as a priority.
Right.
If all of a sudden the Post Office comes back and says, hey, we only need two spots, then.
They were looking for twelve, and we've.
That five is, uh, yeah, okay.
Five, we're getting there.
Started with two.
Yes, it started with two, yep.
So they'll, they'll eat all five of those out.
But they have been parking in regular meter spots.
They have, and some of them are still getting tickets, yes.
Yeah, it'll be good. Uh, so we do, we do need a.
I think I said so moved, to what you just said.
Okay, we need a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None.
All right, good, we'll make it happen, thank you.
Good creative solution. There is two sub-bullets here about the skating park and public library. Is there updates on those that need to be addressed?
It's just, we got the emails.
Oh, wait.
We got the emails, and Diane. Well, I'm looking at Sarah's first.
Okay.
I'm looking at the skate park for Sarah, who is recommending that we might think about using the skate park for parking. But I don't think that's an option, especially since we're putting a retaining pond down there, and, you know, it's just...
I think we've got to let that all happen, and maybe there's an option, but...
For some of the vehicles for South Main Street, is that, that's so as well?
They're going to use that for layout, too.
Construction may use some of that area for equipment, they may use it for material to be laid down on the roadway.
Right.
Yeah, we just don't know yet how they're going to use that.
I think the other one, as far as P's public parking, was the discussion around, does the post office, or did the post office have spaces up there, an agreement between either P's or the bank? The bank owns actually the parking lot. They don't recall ever having an agreement. And this is a follow-up to that Diane provided.
And the bank manager was supposed to talk to his higher-up to see if they would come up with any kind of agreement. He did say to me, we'll give you four spaces up there if you take the four, the meters in front of our bank away. It's like, walk up the hill.
They already have free parking in the, well, like, four spots or five spots, something like that. So, there.
Worth a try.
Anything else on parking? Hurlak?
That's it for us.
There's going to be meeting, well, meeting, I don't know when the next meeting is, a couple of weeks. And I'm supposed to be doing the secretarial thing, so I have to, like, do the minutes. And I'm just trying to think, Neil, did you attend the last meeting?
No.
Oh, too bad, oh, okay, so...
In terms of updates also, that should be Bill and Neil, not me.
Yeah, no, there's a couple of bobbles with the names and stuff, but...
Jeez, I'm just making sure they're on their toes.
I know, right?
I'll let you know next time.
I just couldn't make it.
I was there, just drawing a mental blank.
No movement on economic development still? Energy Commission, we got an update from Grace, anything to add?
We also had a meeting last week, and there's going to be probably a more formal presentation on, you know, a possible warrant article at probably like, you know, October meeting. And the meeting last week, Coram wasn't there.
Okay.
Technically, didn't have a meeting.
Okay. And we should add Chamber of Commerce with Mary Ann's name going forward.
I already have it.
Thanks a lot. I'm just wondering, hopefully, the economic development piece will kind of be part of that as well.
It feels like they could end up being very related.
I hope so, they, yeah, I hope so.
It sounds good.
Yeah, I think once again, with Maddie, who's full of energy, hopefully Plymouth will have a voice again.
I think so, she's kind of like a captive audience, too.
Yes, that's true.
The proximity is nice.
Yep.
Any public comments?
Yeah, I was going to comment, or, Tom Miller, I was going to comment on that. But I guess I answered a question about the Green Street spots for employees. I had a list of the numbers that I did to the inventory of that Green Street. So we have about 160 spots on Green Street now. And if we just extend the parking from the Senior Center to South for another 20 spots, we would gain on that. I think it's a combination of doing that along with figuring a traffic, alternate of traffic flow on South Main Street during construction, if they runs, if they run into a technical issue where the street is closed down, where's the flow of traffic going to get from South Main Street? From coming northbound? If they get off on unnamed way and go through the Five Points Road and up by Bachelor Block, Bull and Beer House, that's Five Points. I'm just trying to think ahead about relocating employees for parking. And then what is the established flow anticipated or scheduled for diverting traffic during construction of the Water and Sewer? So that's part of that plan of, we've been looking at the Green Street Plan Project since the 80s. And this was one of the reasons why we were trying to get that crossing established at the intersection of Five Points Railroad Square and unnamed way is to cross the tracks so that we could have an established flow in case of an issue on Main Street. So, anyway, it's just something that, yeah, part of the, who's ever got a committee on this South Main Street project next year needs to look at. Because if you don't have a means of that traffic coming north or going south, then you're going to have to have them go through, get off Parker Street, or go up Crawford Street and do the, you know, roundabout area. You know, and I don't know what you've, what anybody has pre-planned for that, but it could become quite an issue, so. And I say if they wanted to, like, get those spots on, on South Green Street, right, for the Highway Department, you know, we were looking to see about expanding that area back and planning a Green Street parking improvement. Where some of the people go into that parking, that dirt area, and they go on the backside of the existing parking area. But I think we were holding off because of safety concerns of how close you get to an embankment that's not protected. So I think there's, keeping a single line of the existing parking profile from the Senior Center is probably the safest bet. Which has, I measured it out, is more than enough room for 20 spots. And keep enough distance for the Highway Department. But, anyway, thank you.
Joseph, or Chief, or Kathy, one of you should know, what's, what is the plan if, if, because the the hope is that they'll always keep one lane open, but reality will, I'm sure, disrupt that plan on occasion. What, where are they going to reroute traffic when that happens?
Yeah, so as, as the, you know, as the contracts are written, they're required to notify the town. Should there be any reason why traffic would have to be shut down, and they would have to receive specific approval to be able to do that in advance? So the hope would, of course, be that there would be no need. HEB did put together a, you know, a proposed detour and signed a package for, should that need to happen. But that would also be something with the contractor, they need to provide an alternative that was agreeable to the town as well. And that would need to be approved by the town before they could go forward with that. As of right now, they're supposed to keep traffic on the Green Street project.
So what is that plan? Is it, is it up Russell Street?
Yeah, Parker Street to Langdon.
Parker to Langdon, okay, yeah.
Not the best option, but there's really no other option, so that's the problem.
If you do want to go on the, on the website and go scroll kind of deep into the plan set, there is a signage package and proposed detour from HEB and that, in fact, appendices to that plan set.
Yeah, it is unfortunate that unnamed way and all of that isn't figured out, but I, that's been not figured out for so long. I don't, I don't see that coming together by spring. Okay. Any other public comments?
I make a motion to be given to non-public in accordance with RSA 91-A, colon, 3, comma, 2, A Personnel.
And lawsuits.
We also have a lawsuit.
Lawsuit, sorry, I didn't see that.
Thank you.
So what is that, what?
E.
E.
So A and E, I second that.
Neil, your vote?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Zach, aye? Bill?
Aye.
Ted in remote?
Aye.
Okay, how can we keep?
So the quickest?
Ted on.
Yeah, who are we doing first?
Well, you have three.
I think the quickest, maybe Joseph, I wanted to start with him.